All right, I will call tonight's, uh, meeting of the Planning Commission Tuesday, August 8th. I'll call it to order. Um, I will start with approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I miss.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, um. Oh, you snuck that. I went muscle memory. I was about to do the minutes. Um, so commission appointments, we have, um, two that are currently open. So we can have some discussion. We can also table this if we'd like, uh, folks to consider. Um, Mr. Perry, would you give a brief description of the two that are open?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you. The, the two, uh, commission appointments have to do with, um, two, uh, exits from the commission. We had Carla Blackmore, who was serving on the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, and Steve Dana was serving on the Community Improvement Corporation. And so since their terms are over, they're no longer serving on the commission, that makes a vacancy. So this commission typically has representatives on those two groups. Uh, Councilor Prithridge is actually on the Parking and Transportation. Uh, so it'd be up to you whether you wanted to have another representative on that group, uh, or not. Community Improvement, uh, there's not a designee from the commission right now. Uh, so either one, um, it would be good if you didn't wait until the end of the calendar year. So if you, if you wanted to talk about it more, that would be fine. If you wanted to wait until, um, you had a full commission, that would be fine too. But those are the two representatives that are open.
And those are the only two that we have, uh, unaccounted for.
Yours, um, you're starting a new term and you're, you're serving as the designated to the Historic Commission.
Yes.
But that can be, that can just be continued because of your term is starting again.
I call dibs. Um, if either of you are interested, or if, uh, there's consensus, we could talk about it. Uh, more information about the roles, responsibilities, and purview, uh, and bring this up at another meeting. But if anyone is very interested in one?
I have no opinion at the moment, so.
Mr. Arubel?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
I mean, I'd be happy to take CIC.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay. Well, the other thing too is what we could do is, uh, because I do want, uh, Dr. Prithridge's perspective, because he is the representative for council. So, um, uh, his council assignment is to that committee. So not that there would be a conflict, but I also want to make sure that there's not, uh, real or perceived, uh, you know, limitation to the voice in, in there. So, um, with that, I'm willing to accept the nomination for Mr. Smith to CIC.
Yeah, I nominate Mike to be representative.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the motion?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, seeing none, you are now our official representative to CIC. Uh, based on the consensus, um, I would accept a motion to table the rest of the appointments, uh, to a further, well, and automatically go to the next meeting. So I'll accept that.
Motion to table discussion of, uh, Optab Designee until the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, seeing none, you are now our official representative to CIC. Uh, based on the consensus, um, I would accept a motion to table the rest of the appointments, uh, to a further, well, and automatically go to the next meeting. So I'll accept that.
Motion to table discussion of, uh, Optab Designee until the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Uh, that is table till next. All right, moving on. Approval of the minutes from the June 13, 2023 meeting. Any additions, changes, corrections? Uh, obviously our, our new commissioners weren't here, so they don't have the, uh, ability to vote on it even. Anything we want to add? All right, I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes as presented. There's only three of you who can do it.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Mr. Smith with the motion. I'm gonna take Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect. That passes. Uh, at this time, we will entertain public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. I'd just like to give a friendly reminder to folks. Uh, if you do want to say something about, uh, a business matter, an idea, a concept that is not on tonight's agenda, this would be the time to come forth. You will have up to three minutes. Uh, we ask that you come up. You, uh, clearly state your name and address. And, uh, a reminder for this and future public comment, it is public comment. The commission will not engage in dialogue. Uh, if there's something we feel should be discussed at appropriate time, staff and the commission will discuss it, but we will not engage in a back and forth with the public. So if there's anyone who wants to talk about something that's not on tonight's agenda. Ah, tough crowd. All right, moving on. Uh, reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staff. Mr. Smith, would you start us off, sir?
I will. I am, seeing as I'm just recently assigned to CIC, I've not been to a meeting yet, so I have nothing to report.
I set myself up for that one. I was thinking you would talk about something else, but never mind. Uh, Ms. Webster, if you have anything that you think is pertinent for the good of the order?
No.
Vice Chair Rosenberg?
Um, Housing Advisory Commission, um, did not take place last month. Um, but the things that we have been working on are actually going to be talked about today.
Perfect. Mr. Bracken?
Not much near the typical subjects, uh, solar, methane, less than cooling, uh, pollinator gardens, but nothing particularly.
All right. Mr. Arubel, is there anything you have for the greater good?
I do not. Everything.
All right, thank you. Uh, Historic, Historic and Architectural Preservation, uh, we're supposed to meet tomorrow, but we've been given a reprieve for one more month. Uh, we had a lot of things come through, so we're enjoying the hiatus. Uh, Mr. Perry?
Thank you. Uh, some exciting news in the grant world. Uh, Federal Transit has given some money to Butler County Regional Transit on our behalf for bicycle and pedestrian planning, uh, in to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand. So, um, that's, that wasn't expected necessarily, uh, because we had planned to do some transportation planning work in 2024 out of the general fund. So this will allow the city to do some corridor planning for bicycle, pedestrian safety improvements that have been talked about for almost a decade now. As you know, we've been doing, uh, a lot of work in that area over the past decade. Uh, but there's more to be done, sort of in the in-town, um, streets, uh, complete streets policy, implementing some of those things. So the hope is that we'll be able to, uh, secure a good consultant, uh, to do that work. And, uh, essentially it's a pass-through from BCRTA. It's a transit-funded grant, but because of our size, uh, we're small enough that really all of Oxford is able to be connected to transit, e- even regarding with the, um, transit stops. So we've been able to use that funding to potentially even design improvements, uh, along streets that will eventually connect to transit stops. So, um, that would be, uh, bike lanes and widened sidewalks, um, curb bump outs, those types of things. Not for actual construction, but just to give the city a better idea of what those projects would cost, so that when grant funding does become available, uh, there's, there's not a weight to do the engineering.
I hear those folks are really swell. I hear their trustees are awesome too. Mr. Moore?
Yes, nothing further from me tonight. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Uh, we are gonna stick with the order, uh, because it's the agenda we approved. Uh, so the first order of business is PC 2023 dash zero nine fifty-two thirty-four Hester Road. This is preliminary in plan development unit for twelve residential cottages. Uh, Community Development Professionals is the applicant agent. I will accept the motion to adjourn to public session. Mr. Bracken with the motion?
Second.
Mr. Smith with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? You know, I love this. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. So this is a combined submittal. This is a preliminary and final plan development for the Oxford Cottage Community to be located at fifty-two thirty-four Hester Road. And the applicant and developer for this request is Community Development Professionals, or CDP for short, represented by Mindy Muller. Uh, the city actually owns this parcel. Um, it totals two point one acres in size. It's a hundred and eighty-three feet of lot width and five hundred and twenty-three feet of lot depth that we're dealing with here. Um, the current zoning classification, it's actually zoned single-family presently. It's the R1B, single-family, medium-density residential district. And the proposal, um, as a plan development is to do a pocket community consisting of twelve affordable cottage-style units. And this will help to fulfill supportive housing needs in the community. And just briefly, um, to revisit our 2020 housing needs assessment, this was done by Bowen National Research. It was a housing study of the community. And, uh, essentially what they identified is, uh, we have a significant need for additional housing units, really of all types here in the Oxford community. Um, so that is everything ranging from kind of the, uh, under a thousand dollars a month range, all the way up to seventeen hundred and above, um, anywhere from a moderate to a critical need. And of course, with this housing development being twelve units, it's kind of chipping away at some of our, um, greatest housing needs. Um, so looking at the site location, this is an aerial view. Um, some of the, uh, landmarks and, and sites within the vicinity. So there's the College Inn and Suites, which was, uh, used to be the Baymont Inn. There's Somerville Bank, which is to the south. There's the Recford Woods subdivision, so Carter Court and Fuller Way are to the north. There's Dufour Lane and Honor Lane, the Northridge subdivision, which is off to the northeast. Um, and then of course, College Corner Pike is predominantly commercial in nature. So this is, um, gonna be almost like a transition between, between uses, going from commercial, um, leading into more of a predominantly single-family residential area of town. And here's a look at the zoning classifications. So you can see the R1B district is shown in kind of a bright yellow color. Um, there's also the R1A district, which is another residential district for single-family, uh, a little bit lower density than the R1B. And then everything that is zoned commercially, the GB or General Business Zone, is shown in red. And here's a look at our comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan identifies this as a suburban neighborhood designation. Um, so kind of sharing the same designation as the properties to the north and to the east. Um, there's the Oxford Green, uh, area apartments that's, uh, identified as transitional suburban neighborhood. And there's also the Employment Corridor designation, which is to the south and to the west on Hester Road. Um, here's a look at the existing land uses. So the blue color is identifying government-owned property. So the city actually owns, of course, the subject property, which is two acres, as well as, um, a little triangular-shaped property at the corner of Hester Road and College Corner Pike. Um, there's commercial, commercial usage identified in pink, multifamily usage identified in orange, and then everything else is kind of falling into more of an other category. So predominantly residential, single-family. Um, there is the Miami Mobile Home Trailer Park, which is visible on screen. Okay, so here is a bird's eye view, and this is looking a northerly direction. So, um, you can see that the site is pretty significantly wooded at this time. Um, probably the thickest kind of pocket or patch of woods is, is off toward the, the eastern two-thirds of the site. And, uh, there are access points proposed off of Hester Road. That is where the, the frontage is located along the, the existing public street. Um, and then here's a bird's eye view looking to the east, and we could refer back to these slides as needed during our discussion. Um, staff did visit the site on July 13th, so these are some of the photos that were taken at that time. So here's a view from the driveway that leads out to the hotel. Um, and then here is a view from Hester Road, as well as a view from the middle of the site. Um, and this, this, uh, aerial really gives you an impression for where the, um, thickest patch of woods is located here on the site. Okay, so we'll start with a site aerial, um, in 2012. And this shows you, um, there used to be a single-family home and a detached garage that were located on-site, and those have since been demolished. So this is a look at the 2022 aerial imagery, which is the latest imagery that we have. And then I'll begin to overlay the plans that have been submitted over time. So, um, this was the estimated property line, kind of beginning with the procedural history evolution of the site designs. Okay, so this was the, the first concept was from January 9th of this year. So this is the very first plan that we received from the applicant, um, showing a total of twelve cottages, kind of clustered around in kind of a courtyard-style setting with the parking in the middle. Um, that eventually evolved to this January 30th concept, where the parking was broken up a little bit more, and the driveway was extended all the way to the very rear, um, to the last remaining units. And then here was the third concept from May 4th. Um, so this was a pretty significant departure from the earlier design with kind of a straightaway drive. Um, this was embracing a different sort of orientation to have a one-way looping drive with angled parking situated off to the side, serving the twelve units, so kind of clustering those a little bit closer together into the center. Um, and then having the front doors oriented, um, sort of outward toward the edges of the site. And then this was actually the, this was the concept plan that was, uh, more formally submitted and was reviewed by the Planning Commission in June. So June 13th, this was the concept. So, um, again, kind of angled parking, uh, with a little bit more parking clustered toward the back. Um, there would be a dumpster enclosure toward the back as well. And we've arrived here tonight. This is the currently proposed plan. Um, probably the most notable difference between the concept plan that the commission saw in June and the one that is being proposed now, um, is mainly having to do with the parking. So, um, flipping between the June concept and now, uh, you'll notice how the angled parking spaces that were located along the northern boundary, those have since been, um, situated toward the southern edge. So still angled, but, um, clustering them a little bit more. Uh, the number of spaces has actually decreased. So originally, they were showing thirty total spaces. Um, we are down to eighteen at this point, um, which is going to take a waiver to code in order to have that number of spaces. Um, if you were to treat this site the way that you want a single-family use, the minimum number of spaces is twenty-four. If you treat it as multifamily, it's actually thirty. So the original concept was kind of embracing that minimum parking standard. Um, but we have reason to believe, per the justification that's provided, that, um, a lot of the occupants that are anticipated for these units won't necessarily always have private vehicles that they need to park on-site. And so, um, it is being requested, more or less, to have less parking involved with the site plan at hand. Um, and then this is just a more kind of stylized view of the same exact plan, um, that shows you the asphalt, kind of gray, and then the open space would be green. And the cottage footprints are shown in white with black outlines. Um, and this is zooming in a little bit more, so we can get a sense of the development features that are proposed. Um, again, there are two access points that are proposed off of Hester Road, so two new curb-cut aprons effectively. Um, they will be one-way drives, so the entrance will be to the south and the exit would be to the north. Um, there is an identification sign that's proposed, uh, toward the front of the site, and that has been basically scooted right up to the front property line. So it is going to take a waiver to the setback requirement, um, in order to position the sign as they have shown. Um, normally, the minimum setback is whatever the height of the sign happens to be, that is also the minimum setback. So in order to situate it a little bit closer to the right-of-way, it will need a waiver. Uh, but that's proposed at forty-two inches tall, and it won't be illuminated at all. It'll just be natural illumination. Um, here is just a slide showing the water and sewer connections that are planned. Um, so everything is effectively going to tap off of existing utilities on Hester Road. So the water is shown in blue, and then the sanitary is the green. Okay, and we did receive a tree survey, um, as part of the application, and this is it. So it shows the existing vegetation on the property. It shows the size in terms of the, the width of the, the tree, um, tree trunks. And, uh, also shows the new trees to be planted as well. Um, so the next slide is, uh, taking that tree survey information and kind of stylizing it, so it's a little bit easier to read. So all of the trees that are planned to remain are shown in green. And then, um, there are exemption areas per code. So, um, the tree ordinance was written such that, you know, in order to do development, you're gonna have to clear away at least some of the vegetation on the site to make way for features like parking, like building footprints, like utilities. Um, so there are various exemption areas that are measured per the tree ordinance. So those areas have effectively been measured on this slide and are shown in yellow. Um, so you can see how those yellow areas pretty much coincide with the trees that are planned to be removed. Um, but the good thing is, uh, a lot of the trees will, and are planned to remain. So everything that is in green, um, and that includes the eastern pocket of the site that's shown off-screen at this point, um, that is proposed to remain. So clearly, this site plan, uh, in our view, is sensitively designed to try to accommodate as much preservation as possible while still accommodating development. Um, there is an issue when it comes to the parking aisle width. There are various dimensional standards in our parking chapter for parking spaces that are angled at sixty degrees. And, uh, most of these standards are being met, like a nine-foot minimum width, uh, length per stall, ten feet, five inches, stall depth of twenty-one feet. Uh, however, the one-way aisle width minimum is eighteen feet, and that is shown at twelve feet currently. So this is the width that's shown, and this is the width that's required per code. And there's a very practical reason why you need extra width when you have angled parking spaces, to be able to allow the vehicles to effectively pull in and out of those spaces, so they're not running over grass or, or running over curb. Um, and so really, the, the aisleways that are adjacent to those parking spaces need to be widened to the minimum standard. Um, we would not encourage entertaining a waiver to this standard whatsoever. When it comes to the drive aisles that aren't adjacent to parking spaces, those can remain at twelve feet, as is per code. Um, so it's really just those areas of the site that are adjacent to parking that need to be bumped up to this eighteen-foot minimum. Um, here is a look at the elevations for the cottages that are planned. Um, not too many changes between the concept plan review and now. I think the main change was adding some doorways to the rear, so there will be more direct access to that central courtyard in the middle of the site. Um, and also not really any changes with respect to the floor plan compared to before. Um, it is kind of shown as a, an efficiency-style layout. Uh, so bedroom, dining, kitchen, combined in a single room with a path room. Um, and the overall floor plan is still at three hundred and ninety-six square feet in total. Um, and these units are going to be prefabricated. Uh, Unibill Industries would be constructing them, so they would be built in a factory and then, um, transported to the site and set on foundations. So the recommendation at this time, staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to seven conditions. So the first condition is, uh, sort of reiterating the code standard for a minimum of eighteen feet. We would like this to be implemented for the drive aisles adjacent to parking. Condition number two is in reference to the landscaping plan. So there's a minimum number of trees that are required in a front yard area per code. And so the applicant is showing, uh, I believe it's a total of eight trees in the front yard. Uh, fringe trees is the species that was selected, uh, which is a species on the city's tree list. However, we'd just like to, for a little bit more species diversity to be embraced. Uh, and I think for a better overall landscaping plan, it would make more sense to take some of those required trees from the front yard area and better disperse them throughout the site. So that's what condition number two is designed to do. Um, condition number three has to do, uh, with the utility infrastructure work. And, um, really, this is just the, the normal protocol when it comes to any development. So, um, just reemphasizing the need to meet city specifications to the discretion of the service department for things like utilities and stormwater systems and so forth. Um, condition number four has to do with the bicycle parking. So they are showing a location for a bike rack, uh, kind of on the southern edge of the site. Um, we would like for that to be on a concrete pad, so that way the, the, the ground is not getting torn up by bicycles. Uh, so that's condition number four. The remaining conditions that are mentioned, um, are there for the sake of waivers to the code, which is possible through the plan development process. Um, number five would be a waiver to the, the twenty-five-foot minimum perimeter setback that's required for residential plan developments. Um, this was something that we had discussed previously during our concept plan review. Um, it, it, it really, to, in order to accommodate sort of the narrow width of this site and fit all the planned features into the geographic area that we're dealing with, it really makes sense to reduce the setback along that southern edge where it's adjacent to commercial, where we're not compromising the buffering from the adjoining residential. Um, but when it comes to the commercial, especially since there's trees along that edge that are planned to remain, um, it makes sense to us to reduce the setback in that area. Um, and so the plans that were shown previously are all reflecting, of course, that reduced setback. Um, there seemed to be support toward that waiver at the previous meeting. Um, condition number six would be recognizing the waiver to reduce the number of parking spaces from a minimum of twenty-four to eighteen. And the last condition is recognizing the, um, waivers that would be needed for the freestanding community sign. Um, technically, you are not allowed to have a community identification sign in the R1B district as the code is written. Um, since this is a planned development, again, there's flexibility inherent to that. And since this is being done as sort of a quasi-multi-family-style development, where you're having multiple units on a single property, um, it does make sense to have an identification sign of the size that's planned. And so condition number seven would be acknowledging that and allowing for that to happen. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions from the commission.
Does anybody on the commission have a question for Mr. Moore?
Can we go back and look at the tree plan again?
Yes.
I wonder, just seeing. Stylish, all of the. Okay, so the, all right, so I'm assuming the trees along the northern property line, those, those small green circles, those are, those are new trees?
They are, yes. Um, my apologies, I failed to mention that. Yes, there are new arborvitae trees that are planned along that northern edge. So there are, um, I think it's a total of four existing trees that would, um, are planned to be removed. But then these arborvitae. then these arborvitae plantings would help to provide some screening to the adjacent residential property.
I have a question. So what is intended from a landscape point of view for the central section?
I don't believe that there's any plantings that are planned for the central section. There are some garden spaces that are planned, but I think, yeah, they're represented here and here on this slide, but apart from the gardening, I don't think there's any landscaping of any kind, at least that's been shown on the plans that we've received.
Ms. Mueller will have a chance to come up after Mr. Moore, so she may be able to...
All right. Do you... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. And so the orange trees are removed?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
For the bike, how much is required?
That is a good question. I think the staff report may touch on that. I think it's probably going to be three bicycle spaces.
Only three spaces for...
Because our bicycle parking is based on the number of off-street spaces, that's why it's a lesser amount, but perhaps it may make sense in this situation to have more.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore?
I was just going to say, I know we went back and forth and back and forth on where to put the parking, so was there a final rationale for going ahead and putting it all on the south side?
I think, if I recall correctly from our concept plan discussion, there was, again, sort of the need to respect that 25-foot perimeter setback, and if we go back to the slide that shows the concept plan that was being discussed in June, those parking spaces were interfering with that setback, and so I think sort of the easiest solution that's been employed at this time is just to simply relocate them to the south. I think there was some discussion, if I recall correctly, about having parking spaces in proximity to the units, so it would put the units along the northern end at a little bit more of a disadvantage in terms of the spaces being directly adjacent to those units. Just something to keep in mind there.
The driveway to the hotel being the lesser of all evils versus the northern residential to the north, yeah, that's kind of what I talked to. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Mueller, would you like to come up and you can present, you can answer questions?
Will you guys turn the volume up a little bit? We can't hear you back.
I don't have control over that.
Yeah, I'm going to have to...
I've never been accused of being quiet. Ms. Mueller?
Well, thank you. Thank you for that great presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the landscaping in the middle. It's really a community space. I'm not opposed to maybe even looking at putting some of the trees that we're going to be dispersing, you know, more into that area, provide some shade. I think that makes a lot of sense, but the idea is to have a community space. We are trying to build a community, and there's been a lot of effort put in to make sure that we are neighboring one another, neighboring, being good neighbors to those in the Oxford community and certainly the ones surrounding this property. We did have that door added in the back. I really appreciated that suggestion from the last time. I love the new design, I think it makes a lot of sense, and I think it will really contribute to people being able to use that backyard collectively. So to your point about landscaping in the middle, I think that's a good thought to add some of the trees back there. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Yeah, so on the question of bicycles, you know, I see a lot of people in the area of town that were talking about using bicycles, and I think that's a really economical way for people to have transportation. So are you planning to only have the three required spots, or would you be willing to add to that?
I think it's a great idea to add to that. I think it was a matter of trying to meet the code minimums on that and didn't give a lot of thought to, does it make sense to have more? I think we could totally do more.
And then I've been really impressed, and there's some apartments near where I live, they constructed some covered, basically pads that then are covered for their bicycles for their tenants, and those are beautiful. I could give the address later.
Please do that. I think that's a great idea.
But that might be really good. Like, I'd love to see like 12 spots covered. I mean, I know that's a cost, but I think that, you know, we already have to minimize the parking, so...
Correct.
Well, that would provide one for each unit, so that would...
And one for each unit, yeah.
Yes, that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I'd be happy to go take a look at those and see if we can work that into the design.
Any other questions for Ms. Mueller?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of elaborate on where I was coming from. I haven't been to previous meetings, so I'm not going to, you know, opine about the overall plan. It's just that if, you know, the concept includes a strong belief that a shared community space is part of the ethos of what you're doing, I just feel that it would be great to develop that center space a little bit because I think, you know, unless you're anticipating that each of the cottages will have the wherewithal to develop a garden, I think it would be really helpful to foster that sort of spirit by landscaping in some way. You know, there's many different things you can do, it doesn't have to just be trees. And additionally, in regard to that, activating that central space, I feel like it would be great if you could have a little bit more visibility to the backside of the cottages. In other words, what I saw was, one, there's a door, but I don't believe there are any windows on that facade, and I think it would be fantastic both for the quality of the cottage itself, plus, you know, giving people a visual connection to this space and to see their neighbors and all that stuff. So, you know, it doesn't have to be expensive, just a window or two, I think, would be great
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. At this time, we will entertain any comments from the public pertaining to this business item, so if you would like to speak to this business item, feel free to come to the podium and identify yourself. Again, a reminder that you will have up to three minutes, and we will gladly listen to what you have to say, but it is not intended to be a dialogue with the commissioner staff.
Well, I'm Greg Erickson, I live here in Oxford. I have two questions. Are the units going to be so uniform, or do the architects have some freedom of design? These are kind of depressing, cookie-cutter-looking outcomes here that kind of signify depression-level, modern depression housing. There must be some way you can stimulate a little style or character to it, even just to compensate the neighbors nearby. So that's just one comment. The other one is homeless people, I guess, is the target audience here, but there can be a homeless person or a homeless family, and does the developer have, or is there any idea of having, if it's a homeless family of three kids or so, a larger unit available as a backstop? So those are just, those are more flexibility in design or capacity. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments? Even though you need no introduction for the record.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Kevin McKeon, 2126 Dana, here representing my employer, Summerfield Bank, which is a neighboring property. First of all, thank you for allowing us to speak and address our questions and concerns tonight, thank you. Since this property was purchased by the city with this specific development in mind, we understand that the approval was mostly assured, so we just have a few questions for everyone and don't need answers tonight. I'll gladly send them to Mr. Perry or Mr. Moore, both, but we'd like to have them in writing before it heads to council. Who will be overseeing the property and the residents? Plan shows no onsite office or management space, despite the stated goal of providing a supportive housing environment for Oxford-based residents who have struggled to find affordable, safe rental housing. Will this fall into the city or one of our social services agencies? If so, which one, and is long-term funding, and secured or budgeted for? Who will be both financially and physically responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the property? Is that the developer, CDP, or is it the city? Again, needs to be budgeted and financed for if it is the city. What is the anticipated monthly rent? I understand subsidized, it's supposed to be lower affordable housing, but I'd like to hear a number. Some of the numbers I've heard for other affordable projects around town weren't terribly affordable, in my mind. What sorts of timeframe will the transitional residents be given to find other housing? Is this short-term, is it long-term? And what other developments has CDP developed, and what's their track record? The website lists no examples. The website only lists services to help start, build, train, and sustain a nonprofit, and that they're working in areas of affordable housing and homelessness to strengthen local and regional systems to ensure everyone has a place to live. Again, no mention of what they've done and the success. If there are any that have been developed by CDP, has Oxford reached out to them and their communities to determine their success or failure, and how they're being cared for long-term? This is something the neighborhood and Oxford will be living with. It's a 20-year lease that Oxford's agreed to with them. Does CDP have the staff and funding necessary to develop, build, and manage a project for this kind? The website only mentions one staff, Mindy Muller, no mention of a board of directors, no staff, no financial reports. Leaves a lot of questions in my mind. When I read through their website, lots of wonderful platitudes and great words and sayings, but there's no substance there of what they have done, what they can do, what they're capable of doing. And then, lastly, this probably is irrelevant, but to build quality of homes. We're all aware of the abuse rental properties sustained here in Oxford, and in order for them to remain decent-looking, they're going to need to be decently built. With that, thank you, and like I said, I'll send this list off to Zach and Sam. Thank y'all.
My name is Doug Brooks, I live at 227 Country Club Drive. This isn't my purpose for being here, but I wanted to mention something. If a person is disabled and they park somewhere in that parking lot, and then where they live is through the park and then down three places, they can't get on the grass, right, because of whatever they're on, whatever they use isn't going to function on the grass or in the rain. Loading up one side of this unit with all the parking spaces, even if you slant them, the people on the other side are going to have to... What's the distance between one of those parking spaces and the far corner of this plant? I'm going to guess 200 yards, 300 yards, and we preoccupy ourselves in town with disabled spaces, so people don't have to go very far at all, and then you're setting this place up for what looks like an impossible place to live if you own a car and happen to be in one of the places that's on the other side. Not to mention the danger of being that far away from your automobile and who's ever around, and just the weather. Okay, it's raining. Well, the person on the other side has to get soaked to get to their car. Am I hallucinating on this? This is the stuff you folks have to consider. There are people that are going to be here, people without money, people without automobiles, people that are hurt, people that have things wrong. They're going to be getting taken care of, they're going to be getting food delivered to them, you know how that's going to work, but then you shove all their parking spaces over on one side, you can't possibly approve this setup. Push the things closer together, do a little something in the middle, put a fence up, plant cypress, plant the trees you're going to plant on the edge in the middle, so they're not looking at each other's doorways, right? Leave some holes there, so people can get through.
All right. Thank you for your comments. We traditionally don't respond, but for the efficacy of the two-due commissioners, ADA compliance was heavily discussed at the previous meeting, and the applicant had some creative Does anyone else have anything that they would like to address on this?
Yes. My name is Bruce Blankenship, I live at 5280 Hester Road, which is the north side, so it affects me the most, more than anyone else, probably. I haven't been for putting this in for several reasons. What bothers me is this has been a woods area a long time, and there's a lot of wildlife lives in there, of course, even more so now than when I first moved there, because we have an expanding deer population, and a lot of them cycle through there all the time. And the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood's going to be a lot different, putting that many units in there. And I'm concerned about the drainage, both the sewage and stormwater, because this area on this side of US 27, all the way around to the end of the shopping center, down on the southern part, all of that stormwater drains towards the rear of the property because the property slopes from Hester Road to the east gets lower and lower. So in the very rear where all the woods is, the most woods, that is like a swamp in there many times, where some people, some environmentalists would call it a, not a swamp, but a wetland. Now, I don't know how much wildlife lives in there, it's shrunk a lot from when I first moved there, because of all the building going on, that used to all be rangeland, had cattle grazing, or farm fields. Most of that's been built over now. So behind there, from there all the way to the north where you see Doofel Lane, north and east, that water drains behind all of those houses, and it comes out down on the corner down there, Jacob and Doofel. And when we have, I've looked down there, when we've had periods of extended rain, which we do get sometimes, not all the time, but we can get flooding in that area down there.
We've arrived at your three minutes, Mr. Blankenship, so thank you for your comments.
It gets a lot of water.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. All right. Are there any other folks who would like to speak to this specific issue on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn from public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Smith with the motion. Vice Chair... Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. We are in private session, commission session. So, just so folks who are watching and participating are on the same page, at this point, this is discussion for the commission. We historically do allow engagement with the staff, and then at the determination of staff and myself. On occasion, we will ask for clarification if needed for somebody, the subject matter expert. So, if anyone on the commission would like to start the discussion, capture anything that you may have heard in the presentation, obviously, we've seen this a couple times, just kick it off. Looking at Mr. Smith.
All right. I can jump in there. So, I am, you know, I brought up, I think, ADA last time about access. I don't know, I'm just thinking about with the way this is funded, and if there's any federal money or anything in there that, you know, we're going to have to comply with ADA guidelines, and it would just feel a whole lot better if we had at least, you know, some designated parking spaces that were set in there, that we knew were ADA-compatible.
I believe the three on the arc are, because the one is larger for van accommodation, if I recall.
Those ones are permanently...
Yeah, and then you have to take your wheelchair back down the driveway to get to your house.
That could be an addition of a sidewalk there, too. Say, Mr. Moore? Do you recall, or could you clarify, how many and which are, I guess, ADA compliant?
So, based on the plans that we've received, we really don't know at this time. That would be a better question for the applicant to answer. The zoning code does mention ADA compliance by reference, so it would be especially important to make sure that the parking is compliant from an ADA standpoint at the building permit stage, but I think it really makes sense, based on the discussion we're hearing tonight, to try to identify better how the ADA compliance will be demonstrated.
Okay. And I do recall, because the ones on the curve are different sizes, I remember there was some discussion and clarification there, so if that's no longer there, or has somehow not made it to the final version.
Yeah. The space that you see over here, that is a loading space that's required by code, that's a minimum 10 by 25 space for loading purposes, so that's really unrelated to the ADA discussion in terms of accessibility.
Yeah, I just want to make sure as parkings move, that all those discussions were captured and conversations moved with them.
I actually don't have much to say, except I was going to quote Seth Kerpenbaker, Economic Development Specialist. It is really important to Oxford City Council that we have housing for all. I'm paraphrasing. This is a project that will reduce barriers to having folks that need it acquiring housing in this town. So, I just want to say that I do feel like the parking did get strange at some point, but in general, I'm super supportive, of course, of this development, and then it is also incredibly important to me, knowing, like, the community this is supposed to serve, that there is that bicycle parking.
Yeah, just for the public clarification for those new, we've had previous discussions, and we were pulled in multiple directions because of ADA access, because of we wanted reduced asphalt, because we wanted buffers around the edges, so I assume all that was taken in, and this was the best compromise. But all that's been considered across multiple meetings. So, I don't have much to add. I presume this is the best effort so far.
Mr. Harbuckle, do you have any initial thoughts?
I feel like my comments probably have already been covered, so I really don't have anything to add. I think my greatest concern was the woods being lost, but I'm sure you guys have discussed that already. And it seems like the developer has made an effort to preserve some of the space, so I think that's, for me at least, big deal. That's satisfactory.
Yeah, and that was discussed previously. In fact, some of the parking designs went further into the woods, and we didn't want that either, so, yeah.
And just for the efficacy, as Mr. Moore presented, there's a certain zone in there where there could be a million trees, and if it's in the construction and planting spot, it's not a discussion item. So, there are standards in the tree ordinance that require trees that are removed outside of that area to be replaced at a certain ratio. DBH, I do remember. Ms. Webster, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, so I want to echo Shayna's, Shayna, Sean, sorry, comments that, in principle, you know, I'm all in favor of this kind of housing and this project. Honestly, that, I mean, the thing that, I don't want to re-litigate this, but, you know, to have made a single way through the center of the site would reduce a lot of asphalt and, you know, would allow some of these issues, I think, to be resolved, but you talked about it, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I just would like to be sure that when this is built, that there's a maximum amount of landscape and trees.
Yeah. One of the initial plans did have a center drive, and there was quite a robust discussion on the community aspect.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, you're right on target with that one. My only comments, I do appreciate and take to heart the comments and the presentation. Just speaking of the purview of our commission, we have limited authority, as does the city, for the operation of planned unit developments, things of that nature. Things that are codified must be complied with, so if there is an ADA standard, it must be complied with regardless of our addressing the specificity of it. But also, you know, things like, I don't ever recall having discussions on the operation of an apartment complex, and if they had onsite folks, and things of that nature. So, I just want to make sure as things are discussed, conveyed, that expectations are appropriate and calibrated. So, any question can be asked to anybody, but some questions cannot be considered in decision-making. So, as we move forward on that, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, if there's no other just general consensus discussion, I am willing and able to entertain a motion to approve, deny, table.
Before we say that, I'll just say I'm super excited about this, because it helps the most vulnerable members of our community, and that's far and above my most important consideration.
Thank you, sir.
So moved for your previous comments.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve. Before we approve, just as a point of order as well, and actually, I apologize for the new commissioners, there's 14 design criteria on page, let's see, 10 through 12. Those are design conditions that have to or should be addressed and/or met for approval of anything that we have. And then inherent to Mr. Bracken's motion would be the staff recommendations, 1 through 7, as presented, because he did not, nobody offered an amendment. I will clarify for my vice chair, do you want to specify anything other than a concrete patch will be provided for required bicycle parking? Do you want to quantify that, or are you content that the spirit has been understood?
Do I have to quantify that? I do not feel that I...
It's the beauty of recording a meeting. We have it anyways, so.
Did we get that nod on tape?
Yes. All right. So, the motion we have on the table, and second it is to approve as presented under the 14 criteria, as well as the seven staff-recommended conditions. Mr. Perry, will you call the rule?
Sure. I'll start with Michael Smith.
Yes.
And Webster?
Yes.
Shawna Rosenberg?
Yes.
Matt Harbuckle?
Yes.
Jason Bracken?
Yes.
Corey Gwann?
Yes.
All right. The motion is approved. So, thank you for everybody, your participation and contributions. It's been a fun, I think my brain is just at a loss for the parking modifications that have been made. So, moving on. PC 2023-1155 Rayway, Mary Day Park property, this is comprehensive, the first item, I want to clarify, is a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment for 4.71 acres from preserves and green space to employment corridor. The applicant and agent is the city of Oxford. Do I have a motion to adjourn to public hearing?
So moved.
Mr. Smith with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we are in public session. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening again, everyone. We've got a couple items on the agenda that are paired together, but they're intentionally in sequence with the future land use map amendment being prior to the zoning map amendment. So, this is for the Mary Day Park property. The city was approached by our contracted housing consultant, Neighborhood Housing Services, a couple months ago, partnering with St. Mary's Development Corporation. And St. Mary's Development Corporation expressed some interest in the city of Oxford and had previously partnered with Neighborhood Housing Services, which is based in Hamilton. And St. Mary's Development Corporation had notified Neighborhood Housing in the city of Oxford that Oxford would score very well for funding, for bond camp funding and LITC, low-income housing tax credit funding, for a housing project in Oxford. So, we started going through the site selection process, looking at properties that would already be under site control with the city of Oxford and not have to be acquired because of the timeframe for the funding application being in, next month being in September. And this property on Ray's Way came to the surface. The city does own other property. This property seemed to score the best and be the most likely. And so, St. Mary's Development did approach the city about considering potentially building on this property. The city then took the request to city council, the city staff took it to city council to potentially pursue this and ask the city council to consider expediting the rezoning process because of the timeframe that was in play for the funding. So, what we are finding over and over again is that site control and zoning seem to be the main obstacles for getting access to funding for housing projects. When city council first started talking about housing for all, housing for everyone over the past few years, recently, and made it a stated goal, and not something that was only through the Housing Advisory Commission, what it found was that there were several obstacles, and there was effort to potentially do low-density housing or small units, there was effort to medium-density and even higher-density. And what we have found through our consultant is, and through work by Jessica Green, Assistant City Manager as well, is that the funding is primarily geared toward the higher-density type projects, which get into the 40 and 50-unit type of developments. And any other housing that would have assistance for development, because new construction is typically a lot more expensive than adaptive reuse, would just be local funding only. And so, that's how we arrived at where we're at tonight. And so, the request is, originally started as a zoning map amendment, but I want to show you the future land use map, which is in the comprehensive plan that was just adopted in January by city council. And so, anytime there is a rezoning, the guidance from the recently adopted comprehensive plan is to look to the land use map to see what the vision is for the future of the community in a particular area. And so, you have a couple cases on your agenda tonight that are new. And so, for those of you two newer commission members, you can feel like everyone else tonight, we're looking at two new types of decisions, which is to revise the future land use map prior to considering rezoning. So, while these are paired together on the agenda, they're actually two separate amendments. So, if you felt it was appropriate to revise the future land use map from preserves and green space, or essentially parks, to what we've recommended as potentially considering for employment corridor, which is not a zoning district, it's a vision for a particular part of town, then that would go forward to city council as an ordinance. And that's the way the plan reads, is that when any part of the comprehensive plan is amended, especially the future land use map, it would be done as an ordinance. And that would be previous to a zoning map amendment. Now, because of the timeframe on a couple of these cases you have on your agenda tonight, you're seeing these all together, and so it feels like one decision, but it's actually intended to be two. So, that's a little bit of the background. I'll go back, now that I've laid that background, to the subject property, which is known as Mary Day Park, at the end of Ray's Way off of College Corner Pike. And also in the comprehensive plan are these land use character types, so what we're talking about on the map is currently designated as preserves and green space. So, when the comprehensive plan was adopted, the designation, there was no intention or vision for it to change to anything other than park, and so it's continued to be designated as parks, preserves, and green space. The future land use map has 12 character designations. They don't always equal a zoning district, but it lays out a vision for what that area could look like. There has been discussion of rewriting the zoning code. City council has directed staff to move forward with that, and so some of the zoning districts that we have do not directly reflect the vision and the future land use map. So, we may not even be able to have a zoning district that directly reflects that future land use map designation. So, when you look at these 12 character types, you can look at the primary uses, which of course identifies parks and recreation, secondary uses, stormwater. So, it's open space, not intended to be developed. So, rezoning this to some other type of use from, it's currently its own general business, to a residential or another type of use would not be supported by the future land use map, which is why this is the first step. So, I'll go through these real quick, and you can see what some of the other character types are, and we actually have some schematic drawings of what the neighborhoods are intended to look like in the comprehensive plan in the future, even if we don't have a zoning designation for that yet. This map and this comprehensive plan can be helpful for site planning as well, much like the exercise you just went through, the type of vision that we're looking for for a given area. Skipping on to the last slide, these are the last set of four of the 12 land use character types. Employment corridor is, would be a potential designation that this could be changed to that would support a multifamily use on this property. And if you look at the primary and secondary uses that are in the employment corridor, which is how College Corner Pike is designated in the future land use map, you can see there's retail, commercial, light industrial, mixed-use development. Along with that are secondary uses, which would support employment corridor, higher-density housing, multifamily residential, public spaces, and shared surface parking. So, these are the typical kinds of things you would see in an area where you have jobs and you have higher-density housing, and that's why we have recommended considering employment corridor and not a residential land use district. So, looking at the zoning, you can see that, and I'm going to kind of merge these two presentations together, but when it comes to the procedure of doing the hearing and the voting, you'll want to do that twice, if that makes sense. The general business district is how it's currently zoned. Of course, it's city-owned, it's a park property. So, we're not sure exactly why all of this section of College Corner Pike was zoned like it was. I think there was some effort around the time that perhaps Walmart was being developed to consider how development might continue moving in that direction. Some areas could be redeveloped. Some areas could be redeveloped into commercial area. It probably was just not rezoned after it became a park and it just stayed that way. This is an excerpt from a land use map that was used to create the comprehensive plan. This is not the future land use map, but you can see some of the land uses around there being low and medium-density residential and commercial and industrial, so kind of a mixture at the edge of the community. And then, this is the excerpt from the future vision in the recently adopted comprehensive plan that shows preserves and green space for the Mary Day Park property. And then, shows transitional suburban for the Mobile Home Park. And then, we have suburban neighborhood across suburban tracks to the south. And then, this is the employment corridor designation that if you believed it was appropriate for a change to the Mary Day Park property, that would be the recommended designation to extend that color over to the Mary Day Park property and pass that on to city council as well in the map. We did get a site plan from St. Mary Development Corporation that showed that there could be potential for more than housing on the property. This is a conceptual site plan only. Obviously, you're not reviewing and redesigning a site plan, that's three steps down the way. But, what, some of the concerns that city staff have had is there's an existing park being used there now, and so, is there a way to accommodate both uses together? And so, this was a conceptual site plan we did receive from St. Mary's architect that showed that it could be potentially possible to do that and keep some of the park facilities along the eastern side and have housing on the western side. And so, in the process of, if this did move forward, there would, since this is city-owned property, the city's intention would be to not sell the property, but to do a lease. And so, if this did move forward, this potentially could be arranged and leased so that some of the land could be reserved for park. There have been concerns and statements that are in your packet from residents about that issue. And so, we wanted to make sure that we had this out here so that you could have a look of what it potentially looked like. Since the time that the packet was published, we did find out that, from St. Mary's Development Corporation, that the city of Oxford would no longer score well in this housing funding application that is due next month. So, they are no longer seeking to apply for Oxford this year. They may in the future, but they are not this year. So, their recommendation was to continue with the process, since the process had already been started. Also, city council had passed a legislation ordering an expedited process to make a deadline. And so, our belief was just to keep it on the agenda and continue. But, we did want to give you that update, since the time that the packet was published, that there will not be a funding application submitted next month for a housing development at this location. Like I said, there are several comments that were submitted in the packet. I did speak with Jessica Green and I both did speak with the Parks Director and talked about long-range planning for the city parks facilities. There have been, there has been interest in upgrading the equipment because of the timeframe that it's been there at the park. And there's also a, there's also some connectivity that could be improved between the Mobile Home Park and Ray's Way for pedestrian access and mobility to on-down College Corner Pike to save time for those that are on bike and pedestrian activity. So, there is definitely some improvements that can be made regardless of whether this housing project were to move forward or not. And that's definitely something the Parks Director is looking to do. So, you have the future land use map and you have the rezoning. Our recommendation to support the potential project from St. Mary's Development Corporation would be to the R4 zoning district under the current zoning designations that are on the books. The zoning code will likely be rewritten over the next one to two years because of a major overhaul that will be done in 2024. So, it may not be R4, it may be a different name in the future. The R4 zoning district would allow multifamily housing as a right that would not need a public hearing. However, because it's city-owned property, there would still be a city council approval of a land lease if the project were ever to move forward. And that could serve as a process for designing the site and ensuring it's done in a way that is done appropriately. So, future land use map amendment, rezoning, general business to R4, and then funding application undetermined, site design undetermined at this time. So, this is kind of an overview of everything all at once, but we did feel like it would be appropriate to kind of present everything all at the same time. Happy to answer any questions that you might have? This is a new type of request, so we don't have a precedent to base it on other than the comprehensive plan's approval to do an ordinance for any changes to the future land use map.
Does anybody on the commission have questions for Mr. Perry?
I do. Yeah, so, I think that it's difficult to evaluate the requested action without knowing more about this project. So, I'm just wondering what other material is available for us to understand St. Mary's intentions?
Sure. So, St. Mary's, they do projects in the region and they operate them themselves, they don't sell the properties. They are a long-term, it's a fifteen-year-supported project, and vouchers are accepted at the properties, however, they're not required. It's an income-qualified project. And they do have staffing that go from property to property and manage them. There's a recent project in Pickwa that they pointed us to. It's called Wood Street Lofts, if you wanted to look at that at any point. It's a new development that's open and actually does have a trail that connects through the property for mobility. And they're a well-known affordable housing developer in the region. Their intention would be to operate it in the long term.
Two things for the good of the order. And Mr. Moore loves my use of the word perpetuity. When we, whenever we consider zoning or any kind of change, it has to be detached from a specific proposal. The example would be if we were looking at Parcel, actually, I can use a real example, where Whistlestop used to be and Shademaker's Stories was originally considered to be rezoned general business. And there was a piggyback proposal for a specific, I'm sorry, residential, specific housing development. But if the housing development should fail, they go bankrupt, whatever, the zoning stands regardless of a specific proposal. So, it is tough to keep them separate, but if we rezone it and something happens, it's rezoned for that in perpetuity versus only for Mr. Smith's development. So, but that's just more for the good of the order. Also, if our guests in the crowd, if you could silence your phones and keep conversations to a minimum, I know that certain folks in the back expressed that they cannot hear us, and that would greatly help with the fluidity of the meeting. Any other questions for Mr. Perry? We are the applicant, so we can skip a step. All right, thank you, sir. At this time, I will entertain comments from the public related to, and this is going to be a tough one. This is just, this is not to rezone it, that will be a discussion we have following this one. This is simply to change the land use, kind of the overarching concept for the city planning map. Is that fair to say? All right. So, if you have questions, comments, concerns, feel free to approach the podium, introduce yourself. Again, I said questions, but our commission will most likely not respond directly to the question, and my fearless vice chair will keep a three-minute counter for you. So, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Angela Jones Wright. I live at 184 Baker Lane in the Mobile Home Park. My questions for you guys is, y'all have kids, grandkids, everything. But the point being is, that park is not only for the mobile home, but for the area. Some people like to take their kids over there and play. Yeah, the park is a little lacking and stuff, but they still go over there. We have, I've been there on many occasions, eat lunch with my husband, who works at Wildberries. It is a nice place to stay. It should stay as a park. Not only that, we are able to nature watch. We have deer, rabbits, squirrels. A lot of this, you have to get into a car and go see at the park. But like I said, this is the only park in this area that can be used. And if we take and reestablish it as a residential or business, it will deteriorate the area. The people will not be able to go out, the kids will get antsy and do stupid stuff. That's just the fact of the matter. But with this park, this allows the parents to take them down and play. I've seen many people walk down with their kids in strollers and stuff and take them down to the park to play. It should stay and remain a park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Yes. Anne Fuhrer, I live at 1345 Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I had prepared a statement based on the agenda and the agenda packet, and I will go ahead and read that, but the nature of what I'm interested in saying has shifted a little bit, given that there doesn't seem to be the same time urgency around the development if the city is no longer scoring well according to St. Mary Development. I'd be interested in knowing why this city would no longer score well. And given, I think, I understand you, Sam, that there's not the time urgency, it seems to me that it would be possible to meld the comprehensive plan with some discussion of a master plan like has occurred for the forty-seven acres in the Western Knowles area because I have taken a look at Jacob Young's presentation that's included in the agenda packet for tonight's meeting, and I endorse the spirit and many of the arguments that he makes. I personally have additional history with the use of Mary Day Park. In February of 2019, TOPPS signed a lease with the city to use about a fifth of the park for a new one-stop facility. At that time, I was Secretary of the TOPPS Board. The lease was signed by our then-President Laura Osborne. Our understanding was that when they donated the land to the city, the Day family specified the use of the 4.7 acres for recreation and park. Building the TOPPS facility on parkland would have been acceptable at that time, as it used a small portion of the land and would house a nonprofit whose mission was to meet the basic survival needs of many of the residents of the adjacent manufactured home park and low-income housing along College Corner Pike. Ultimately, TOPPS decided not to build that facility. However, having recently received $1.5 million in county ARPA funds, TOPPS and FRC are once again deciding where to build. They may decide not to ask for a lease on Mary Day Park, but that is still an option. One point that has not yet been mentioned is my understanding that the project that the city would propose with St. Mary Development, although that may not be quite the same now going into the future, in competing for tax credits virtually requires location of the development in a place that is near enough to social service agencies that could provide wraparound services for transitional or permanent supportive housing. I applaud this requirement. I have had varied affiliations with FRC and TOPPS since 2001, including as Executive Director of TOPPS. And I know that many of the individuals and families served by those two agencies cannot be successful without permanent supportive services. This puts the city in a difficult position, as it can be perceived that low-income residents of our community are being ghettoized. Yet, I know, being located near nonprofits like FRC and TOPPS and the important resources of ThredUp Oxford and near a retail center like Walmart and having a green space like Mary Day Park is for many the only way in which their basic survival needs can be met. This puts the city in a difficult position. That said, the ultimate benefit must go, as commission member Bracken said earlier, to the most vulnerable members of our community. I believe it's the city's obligation to make sure that the needs of the future residents of any new development are of highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on the future land use?
Put the picture up. It shows the Country Club Lane, okay? Country Club Drive. And I think it's Mary Day.
You don't get to just request this, demand it. That's all I ask.
So, if you could put, if you-
Please, please put it up. That shows the-
And you're Mr. Brooks?
I'm Mr. Brooks. I'm still, I still live on Country Club Drive. There we go, we're getting there. My house is the second one in from the end of Country Club Drive. That white thing you see there is my swimming pool. I received on August 7th, the city accepted, let's see, my understanding is that on August 97, the city of Oxford accepted this 4.6 acres from the owner of the Mobile Home Park specifically for public recreation and leisure activities. I've been to the park, I've walked the park, I've walked every street in the park, I've talked with people throughout the park, I've been on Ray Way, I've talked to everybody on Ray Way. Nobody wants this. Nobody. You're going to be putting something there nobody wants. The Country Club Lane Drive, don't people, don't want this. There has to be another place to put this. Having said that, how many of you have walked the streets of the Mobile Home Park lately? Two. Two, that's good. Oh, come on. Okay, good. You know the differences, you know what's been going on over there. You know the change that's taking place over there. There's terrible places have been torn out, nice homes have been put in there, they still have, David can speak to this specifically.
You've got ninety new ones.
Ninety new units, right? They've got empty spaces over there. David, how many empty spaces?
Excuse me.
A ton.
Excuse me.
Yeah, he's just backing me up. Okay, so here's the deal.
Dr. Brooks, this is your public comment.
Thank you. You got all, you got all this open space, all this stuff that's sitting there in the Mobile Home Park, ready to be enhanced, ready to be developed, ready to be managed by these people. They've got, they're putting in new places, new mobile homes. They're nice places, they're nice units. And you're trying, and then you're going to take away from these people, you're going to take away this green space where they can go and eat and have lunch and entertain their families and look across the field like we do and look at deer and look at wildlife. It's a very special area of this community. And right now, it's being treated like it doesn't amount to shit.
All right, thank you, sir. Your three minutes have expired. Unfortunately, that's not how it works.
Dave Cameron, 84, Shell Drive. I worked for the Mobile Home Park. I got a question for all you guys. Why didn't we get any literature on this? Do you think we're neighbors? Don't we need something?
It's public comment, sir, we won't respond. It's not public conversation. Mr. Dr. Brooks?
Mr. Dr. Brooks, please be quiet or you're welcome to visit the hallway.
Uh, another thing is too, is you guys are gonna need a way in and a way out, and it's not gonna be through our property. So you better make sure you got your ducks in the road, 'cause mine are.
I am the grandson of the land donors, Ray and Mary Day. I hope the committee has all had a chance to read my public comment on the rezoning issue. I recently spoke with Casey Woodell right after I submitted my written comment, and he says that Mary Day Park is the oldest playground in the city of Oxford, built in 2000. He also informed me, as noted earlier, that in 2024, for his potential budget, he was going to renovate the playground and other areas of Mary Day Park. Sam, if you could pull up the Mary Day lofts, if, if that is okay. Regardless, um, I firmly believe that a renovation of Mary Day Park should be the only changes to the parcel. And now that we know that we're not on a time crunch, you know, I stand firm on this. However, if down the road, the committee wishes to advise city council to continue the rezoning of Mary Day and housing development, I believe a make or break condition, which is implemented on this, that a survey needs to be completed to separate the parcels. And since the land will be leased, it is within the code of the city of Oxford, as long as the, if the parcel was split, it can be leased out to preserve the park. Now, I don't know the exact specifications of the size of that lot. I would say, based on my calculations, that it's slightly over one acre. It is, I want to note that St. Mary's did build a 40-plus unit affordable housing development in Dayton using 1.95 acres. That is known as, I believe, Twin Towers Lofts. And that's per the county report on the parcel. Any additional housing in this area will not only add to the need for more, for a more safe and accessible park and playground, for, again, as it's noted in multifamily housing, the highest density neighborhoods in all of Oxford is along the corridor. Greek proverb says that society grows best when people plant trees in the shade of which they will never sit. That was the vision of my grandfather and the city of Oxford when they accepted the donation of this piece of property, in ordinance with the July of 1997 to use for public recreation and leisure activities. The need for this park has not diminished. If anything, the adding of residences on Ray's Way has only added to the need of this park. The amount of the 2.1 acres going in on Hester Road adds to the need of this park. The accessibility, even with the Oats Trail, two miles. Of all five routes that have been proposed, I've measured all of them, two miles, one direction. It's up to the committee to really see, are we robbing Peter to save Paul by sacrificing 50 units when I, I noted in my public comment that we need 500, 2,000? Do we start with our public parks on our route to get to this 500 of 2,000? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? My name's Steve Smith. I live over at the trailer park, and I live close to the Mary Day Park, actually almost on it. I've been there since 2011, and me and my wife, we have seen a lot of children come there and play, we've seen a lot of graduation parties, we've seen reunions, we've just seen people that's gather there just to play football, horseshoes, whatever. And like, and we've been there for a pretty good spell, and I'm gonna ask you guys something. If you're, y'all live in Oxford, right? Okay, you live in these subdivisions, correct? You guys live in subdivision or anything, in any little community like, like we do in the park? Let's say if that community, that people, the man that developed that community, put a little green space in for your children to play, well, you didn't have to worry about them running two or three miles off to go play. And then somebody wants to come in and take this donated land for the green space and make it into a revenue for the city. I just can't comprehend this. How is this, how is this about? You know, Mr., I never met Mr. Day. I heard he was a, a good man, a compassionate man, done a lot for the city of Oxford, from what I gather, and then you wanna bring in this low-income housing. It just don't make sense, you know? How would you people feel if your little green space for your kids was being yanked out for a low income and they didn't care where they put it? You know, you may have a hundred thousand dollar home. What's the difference between my little thirty thousand dollar double-wide? There's no difference. You know, Miami said no to it, and we in the trailer park say no. You know, it ain't right. You know, kids gotta go somewhere and play. They can't walk two miles to their playground. So that's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment on the future land use? All right, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn from public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Smith with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none? I almost historically go last, so I'll let somebody kick this off.
I need to understand some things. Um, yeah, so, sorry, I know you did a really excellent explanation, but, so I'm feeling, knowing that area of town quite well, and listening to Anne, and seeing, you know, what the community has to say, that park is very necessary, is what I'm seeing. So if we make this future land use change, are we saying that, that we don't care if that is a park any longer? I mean, are we giving, are we not protecting it as a park if we do make this amendment? Or this, this change to the map?
I would say that the protection goes down. It doesn't go away because the city is still the owner of the property and the park is still there, but it lessens the protection for open space. It's a vision for the community, so preserves and green spaces is removed, then the protection does diminish.
Well, we could apply stipulations about a certain percentage or acreage of the park that remains green space.
You could, yeah. As the owner, you could, that's, those are less enforceable if the owner should change this.
I, you mentioned something, Anne. Are there any deed provisions other than the green space preservation about if the city were to sell it? Are there conditions or, or anything that's tied to any future use? So if the city were to sell it, are there conditions that either kick in or diminish?
I don't think I could answer that.
Okay.
That's me.
No, that's fine, I just didn't know. Go ahead.
It's also tricky because we're talking sort of about something specific, but also the general nature of the property. And I'm torn for many reasons. I will say, I absolutely want to preserve green space and park use. I will also say though, that my understanding of the park, every time I've visited, is that it's underutilized, given the amount of area it is, because a large portion is just empty grass. Playground's great, the areas where people picnic is great, and I'd like to do more in terms of preserving green space, but also this might be a great opportunity. And a lot of the objections are the same objections that would be heard, for example, if somebody wanted to bring in a mobile home. The same kind of objections to what would be going on here are coming from people who live in a situation in which those same objections would have been put forth against them, having the place where they currently live, that allows them to make this objection. That, that, that confounds me a little bit, but I understand that's, that's sort of the nature of it. I'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah, I have a real problem with considering these changes for a couple reasons. The first one is that I acknowledge the statements that have been made about the, the love of this park, the need for this park. And, you know, for those who might not have been there, it's very clear that this is really the only nearby recreational opportunity for children who, you know, may not have the ability to travel by car to some of our other parks. The other problem that I have is that the proposal is to make a land use recommendation that is contrary to the visioning map. I mean, it shows, the vision map shows it as a park, so, you know, it seems that the, this is a, is something that has come up because of a situation that is special, which is that the potential of a developer developing this property. I, I feel that it would be very difficult to support.
And for clarification, Mr. Arbuckle, you don't have to speak. I just always want to make sure everyone on the commission has the opportunity to speak. So you and Mr. Smith, and Mr. Rosenberg, you don't have to throw your comments in, but-
I will say that I think it's important to preserve the park for many of the reasons that have been discussed. And also, I am responsive to the notion that the land was donated for a park for a specific reason, and we should honor that, we should continue to honor that. But I also see the need for, for housing as well, so. I wonder if there's a, another option for, for the housing, to another, something that we could do to preserve the park and build housing, something to more certainly protect a park in perpetuity and do the housing. But do you think it's important to preserve the park?
Mr. Moore has his word cut out. There's two of us who do those words.
How, where to begin with this? I mean, I really want to support this because as a, you know, former member of council, we have tried so hard to get an affordable housing project off the ground. I mean, I bet we've been trying for 10 years to do this, but I, I think now, well, even if we still had to make a deadline, I don't know if I could support this. I, I think there's gotta be another way, another, another place we can find to, to do affordable housing now that we kind of know what we need and where we need to go. So, you know, I, I think maybe the, the park is maybe underutilized because, and I'm as guilty of this as anybody, as council, we haven't spent any money on it in 20 years. You know, if we, if we were to spend some money on it, and maybe if we put in a walking path around that park for people with, that maybe have mobility issues from the trailer park, that might be a nice amenity. I'm planting a seed here. So I, I just think it should stay a park.
I would suggest that in absence of this, I think the most likely scenario and most benefit that I think more accurately reflects the desired use of it would be the one-stop for TOPPS and Family Resource Center. And so there would still be some building here, but more of the green space would be preserved and less dense field, though. That to me is favorable, not a bad thing.
All right, I'll throw my 14 cents in. So the last time this parcel was a discussion before this commission, I had to recuse myself because I chaired the board of the FRC. So as much as I love FRC and TOPPS, I never supported putting a building there because it was a park. Ironically, I did not know the, the gift component of it years ago. That was simply based on just that it's the only park there. I do have to say, lesser of all evils, what I conceptually understood as the one-stop would be, I always think of like an elementary school, it's like a small building with, you know, that park setting, so, you know, that is palatable. As far as the low-income or subsidized part, I, everyone is entitled to their opinion, but the reality is regardless of where we propose something of that nature, everyone around there is gonna have an issue, and it's my neighborhood, this neighborhood. So I always view those things blindly. Housing is housing. If it happens to be affordable, that's awesome. But I, I, it's never a design criteria or a condition where, I don't know, class disparity or socioeconomic clarification is, is not, I, I personally feel not appropriate. But I, I have some issues. Mr. Smith and I see fairly eye to eye on this, and I just, you know, I would actually prefer to see the city invest more there, again, having spent a lot of time at FRC and walking down just thinking what could, should, and, and might be. But that's my, my little corner of the world.
I will say this, there, there's certainly some reasonable objections. I have some myself. But I will say that I do think the greatest good to the city and the people who need it most would be this, because I don't think there are many other opportunities for this scale to help those in need at the lowest level of housing, at least portion of this. So I want to put that up front. I do think this would be the most beneficial result, assuming we can also get sustainably centered, the one-stop TOPPS, FRC building as well.
All right, so our options are a motion to approve, a motion to decline, a motion to table, or you can, guys, you can sit there awkwardly silent for about 60 seconds and I will say no motion was made.
I, I would say that we at least table this rather than, if there's a consensus towards rejecting it. I'd rather bank on it and see about other options rather than dismiss it completely.
I think that's fair.
Other people would see it that way.
Well, I'm not sure what our options would be. It's like either we're gonna-
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't feel like table it.
So, so this is one option of several things that might go on here. I, I think all our options remain open if we-
Folks, please be quiet.
I couldn't hear what you said.
I think all our options remain open if we are to table it, and I don't think we even understand all the options yet and the details of the situation.
Well, I would say though, that, you know, to, to add on to, to what our chair has said, that this project is, whatever project may happen is separate from what we decide happens for-
I agree, but that does-
To the space.
I, I agree completely, but I don't think that helps the situation if we were to, I guess we could bring it up later for a change in the future.
This is true.
But to hold off of it would just mean we haven't made a decision to change it yet.
I'm reluctant to make a change at this time, personally.
Yeah, I think, well, there's no reason to make a change.
Well, the table does that as well, though.
But then we, we just have to come back and talk about it.
Well, we have more-
So the person who wins is the person who has a motion.
I'll, I'll put a motion to table this.
Is there a second? Is there a second? We do not have a second? Continue discussion or I'll accept a motion?
Okay, let's see if I do this in the right order. So we need, we need to have three votes, correct?
Well, you need to have a separate hearing for the rezoning, so-
Okay, okay, so this is just on land use, okay. All right, so I make a motion to deny changing the land use from preserves and green space to employment corridor.
All right, the motion on the table is to decline or negate the proposal in front of us. Do I have a second? Ms. Webster with the second. All right, we have a motion and a second.
So a vote, a yes vote is gonna be to deny.
Yeah, we're double-magging it. If you say yes, nothing changes. If you say no, you would like to change.
We're not confirmed.
Yeah. Yes is status quo. All right. Mr. Perry, call the roll.
I'll start with Matt Arbuckle.
Yes.
Jason Bracken.
I'm sorry. Actually, I don't think I'm allowed to do that. No.
Michael Smith?
Yes.
Ann Webster?
Yes.
Shawna Rosenberg?
Yes.
Cory Watt?
Yes.
So the motion that passed was that we do not change the land use at this time. Right, so the next order of business is fairly irrelevant, is it?
So it's still on the agenda, so you need to either remove it from the agenda or...
I would feel more comfortable if we, well, the presentation's already been made, so technically, as soon as I announce it, I would only have to entertain a public comment, and then I could close it and then accept a motion to table or dismiss.
Or just make a decision.
Or do you just want to amend?
I would prefer for it to be decided on. You've already decided on the land use, so that way it's done.
All right. So follow me on this one. All right, so PC 2023-0855 Ray's Way, zoning map amendment, zoning map amendment for 4.71 acres from General Business District, the multifamily R4. The city of Oxford is the applicant. I will accept a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
So moved.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Seeing no opposition, we are in public session. The applicant, the staff and the applicant have presented...
Nothing further.
Nothing further, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain any public comment on this matter for consideration, should somebody want to add to the zoning. And this is just to change the zoning from General Business to R4.
Ian Pugh, I live at 1345 Dana Drive. I didn't make a specific recommendation about land use in my statement. In terms of zoning and moving forward, though, I would repeat what I said, which is, and add to it, I think it is time for further discussion about the relation between zoning and development of affordable housing and affordable housing goals. I'm sympathetic to the members of the commission who are very tempted to say yes, to say no, because we do need more affordable housing, and in order to make it affordable, to develop affordable housing, we need, I think, to have city-controlled land, absolutely. So I understand that temptation. So I look forward to the larger conversation about zoning and as it relates to land use and as it relates to the comprehensive plan, because this, 323 or 343 units, 12 at a time or even 50 at a time, is just not practicable, and there have to be other options. So auxiliary dwellings, for instance, I know is something that is in the larger national conversation about affordable housing. The density of housing is going to be discussed. I would really like to see either the Housing Advisory Commission maybe, or the Planning Commission if it's relevant, and I'm not an expert on zoning, but there has to be conversation about how to get to 343, or how to address the market conditions that make it impossible to make development of affordable housing affordable. I mean, it's, it's, you can't just do little pieces and imagine, I mean, the control of city, the city control of land is important, absolutely, but this is not a planful way of doing it. So I understand Shawna and Jason.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public session.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor of closing public session?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, it is closed. I'm pretty sure this is a brief conversation, but if anybody has anything they want to highlight, or if you just want to cut to the chase and make a motion, or again, sit awkwardly for 30 to 60 seconds, and I'll just see that as a sign.
So what are the implications of making the change? Nothing?
Um, if we, well, my concern, and this is where my perpetuity joke comes in, is if we change it, nothing says it has to be low, affordable housing, nothing says it has to be, I mean, we could get, you know, land dominiums or something in there, and so once we change the zoning, whatever is permissible by right in that zone is permissible, so.
So what are the implications of changing it from General Business to housing? Really agree.
Well, yeah, it is city-owned, but nothing says the city has to keep it. You could do something crazy on Tuesday.
Just unlikely, but it's possible.
Is it, is it more favorable to keep it General Business should the Tops building go in that spot? That's what I'm thinking, for now, while we explore that option.
My apprehension is... She's my eyes going that way. I look this way.
So the Family Resource Center and the Tops have both voted to not use this property. So if they would, if they would want to use this property, then they would have to change their recent vote to do that.
Okay, well, that was recent.
But that was very recent, and I believe that was under the impression that this might be happening here, and so hopefully they will reconsider that vote, and I personally will reach out to them because I think it's a wasted opportunity otherwise for sustainability for that.
Part of, part of my, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, I was just going to say, knowing that, knowing that we have modifications potentially to the zoning ordinance and codes and what we call it, I mean, we could even hypothetically create a Parks and Rec Zone or Green Space Zone Preservation, so I think this is putting the cart way in front of the horse.
So there's a, there's an ag open space zoning right now, which would be a lot more appropriate than General Business. I mean, I don't think any of the residents in the area would want a commercial development there. That would be perhaps even worse than a high density housing, but if it's done appropriately, perhaps, so. But in order to get to multifamily, to support the development that was proposed, then something other than General Business would have been required in order to even be able to apply for the funding.
All right.
But we, you're not choosing, the application is R4, so if you want to deny that...
We're not going to amend it to something else. All right, I believe you had a motion.
Yeah, I mean, should we change it to housing? Like, I'm just trying, I'm just trying, if this is what is going to, like, I want...
If we changed it to housing, they wouldn't be able to use it for any potential social service one stop.
Okay.
I did. It also sends a really mixed message if we just denied the land use.
So should we table this?
Well, I just want to make it best for the future.
There is no, there is no time requirement between the decision tonight and a reapplication in the future.
Yeah, okay.
So ending this tonight is not going to keep the city from pursuing something different in the future, even if it is an ag and open space zoning.
Okay.
So should we table this and tell them to find out what...
I make a motion to deny the... Yeah.
The change.
The change.
All right, I have a motion to deny the request and change. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith with the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Perry? So again, yes means no.
Start over here again with Matt Arbuckle.
Yes will be no. Yes, okay, yes.
Yes is status quo.
Jason Bracken?
Yes.
Mike Smith?
Yes.
Ann Webster?
Yes.
Shawna Rosenberg?
Yes.
Cory Watt?
Yes.
Sorry, I wanted to say no, just a buzz. So, for those of you who've been at our four-hour meetings, we are going to recess for five minutes. So according to that clock, when it's 9:05, we will reconvene. Boy.
Yeah, that's my guy.
All right. So the next order of business is PC 2023-12525 North Campus Avenue, Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment for 6.67 acres from rural to campus. The city of Oxford is the applicant agent. I will accept a motion to adjourn to public comment or session.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor of closing public session?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, Mr. Perry?
Thank you. We have Future Land Use Map Amendment Number Two tonight. This is ahead of a conditional use application for a hotel, and kind of in the spirit of the previous presentation earlier, the comprehensive plan was adopted in January of this year, and there is a property that is on the agenda for tonight for conditional use that is currently outside the city limits, so there is not a city zoning designation for that property. So in order to align the vision of the community's plan, our recommendation is to change the Future Land Use Map to support that, because it's currently designated rural. Here's the map once again, you've already seen tonight. Moving on to... There it is. So this is a zoomed-in shot of the Future Land Use Map, which I showed earlier of the entire city. So you can see that it's designated rural, and that was because at the time the plan was adopted, it was not in the city limits, it's still not in the city limits. There is an annexation that is in process to incorporate this six-plus acres into the city limits. There are three parcels that are in this proposed area, so it's the bold black line, and so this, this light color here is what the designation is as rural, which is actually fairly common going back to the citywide land use map.
I will reconvene our meeting. We are back in order. If folks in the crowd would like to have a private conversation, I encourage you to visit our lovely hallway. No, but I can smack her pumpkin. All right, our next order of business is PC 2023-12, 525 North Campus Avenue, Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment for 6.67 acres from rural to campus. The City of Oxford is the applicant agent. I will accept a motion to adjourn to public comment or session. So moved. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor of adjourning to public session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, Mr. Perry?
Thank you. We have Future Land Use Map Amendment Number Two tonight. This is ahead of a conditional use application for a hotel. And kind of in the spirit of the previous presentation earlier, the comprehensive plan was adopted in January of this year. And there is a property that is on the agenda for tonight for conditional use that is currently outside the city limits, so there is not a city zoning designation for that property. So in order to align the vision of the community's plan, our recommendation is to change the future land use map to support that because it's currently designated rural. Here's the map once again, you've already seen tonight. Moving on to... There it is. So this is a zoomed-in shot of the future land use map, which I showed earlier of the entire city. So you can see that it's designated rural, and that was because, at the time the plan was adopted, it was not in the city limits, it's still not in the city limits. There is an annexation that is in process to incorporate this six-plus acres into the city limits. There are three parcels that are in this proposed area, so it's the bold black line. And so this light color here is what the designation is as rural, which is actually fairly common going back to the citywide land use map. You can see, once I get there, that the majority of Oxford Township outside the city limits has that designation. So what we're doing here tonight is talking about what we want this part of the community to look like. Ideally, we would have all of these areas outside the city designated, so that if a development was proposed, or if an annexation happened, we wouldn't have to do this prior to the development or the rezoning. But we weren't able to incorporate that in the comprehensive planning process with the surrounding townships. We just didn't have that in the scope. Working with multiple jurisdictions, as you might expect, can get somewhat complicated. They have different schedules, different goals in mind, so that was outside the scope of our comprehensive plan to do that. So here we are now, looking at the available designations. I'll scan through those real quick. You know a lot about preserves and green space. Rural, suburban neighborhood, transitional suburban neighborhood. So if we're thinking about the community growing, if you think about that north side of the community, that does have a lot of rural landscape and natural areas to it. A lot of it is Miami University-owned and some rural lands. It's good to think about what should the vision of the community be, to accommodate growth, but also to preserve a character of the community. I think the previous comprehensive plan talked a lot about maintaining the small college town. The current comprehensive plan is not as focused on maintaining the small college town, look and feel, but also being able to adapt and grow to serve needs. And sometimes that could mean growth and change. It may not always be well-received, but it might be necessary in order to be economically and fiscally sustainable in the future, and to support the needs of the community in the future with the aging population and the various competing demands that we have. Going on to the next slide, we see some of the denser areas, urban neighborhood, urban mile square neighborhood, which would be what's to the south of the subject property. Urban core, or what would be supported by uptown zoning. Mixed-use center, which would be like the Stewart Square area, or Locust Street, those types of areas. Obviously, these aren't zoning districts, but once again, we're talking about what the vision of what we want it to look like. Employment corridor, we talked a lot about tonight already. Employment center, and you can kind of see a screenshot of the hotel, I'm sorry, the hospital, and the surrounding area around that. And then campus, which is what we're recommending tonight, that could potentially support the look and feel of an open-space landscape with some development that is interspersed, and then flex industrial. So looking at the site that is adjacent to the university sports complex, Mallett Hall, and the medium-density or low-density residential to the south, and then a rural and undeveloped low-density landscape to the north. So our focus was to find a designation that would accommodate the type of development that's been proposed, while also respecting some of the openness that the university campus has with the style of spacing between the buildings. It's very common when there is a proposed zoning, that there would be, or land use, that there would be development that is driving that. But that doesn't mean that the recommended land use and zoning is the right thing to do. But our effort here is, since the city council has already started working with the developer by discussing providing utilities, is to support city council in that, in finding a land use designation that would support that, which would also guide the development and the way that it's designed. So urban mile square neighborhood, campus, those are two abutting land use designations for the future land use map as well, and then employment corridor along Morning Sun Road. Our recommendation is to extend this campus further to the west to incorporate this, which could support a general business district. It's not an exact fit, but since we have a proposed development before us, it could be combined in a way that a hotel isn't allowed use in the general business district as a conditional use. There are other uses that are a lot more intense, and could have more nuisances that go along with them than a hotel. So the campus designation could support both efforts. However, there's not a city zoning designation that would do both things. So our belief was that campus would accomplish that, since our zoning code has not been rewritten to accommodate a broader range of types of uses that are more specific to... To give you an example, we have a neighborhood business zoning district, which is intended to accommodate needs in neighborhoods that aren't large-scale commercial developments. We haven't done those types of things beyond that. General business is really the next thing, and we know it can't be uptown. So the campus land use designation, what it seeks to do is try to find a middle ground that would support something less intense than what we traditionally see on general business, like along College Corner Pike, while still allowing the use that is in the zoning code. So that's the background for our recommendation. And the reason for this is because the next item on your agenda, and what city council's utility agreement that has already been passed in legislation, is intended to do is, as part of the access to utilities, water and sewer, is to require that there be a general business zoning district along with that. So this land use designation would support that.
Any questions for Mr. Perry? I have one. So the utility agreement that you referred to, the council passed, had a general business on annexation. Is there any benefit or reason that it didn't go office industrial? Because obviously, that would have a different limitations and scope than general business, or is that what you... I know that's what you were talking about with the campus designation versus employment corridor, but is there any reason it was GB over office industrial?
Office industrial is intended to have less of a customer-type of trip generation to it. And so our belief was, general business would have a little bit more foot traffic in consumer demand or vehicular usage than an office industrial, which is more of an office park, or there's not really a customer interface as much. Not that that's not a good zoning district to have plenty of, because it's usually a good income-tax-producing, job-creating district. But we didn't really have anything else, other than general business. There is office and industrial nearby, so that would be an option to consider.
Right.
And campus could potentially support that, if an office park is done in a way that mimics the spacing of the buildings that you would see on the university campus.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Perry? All right. And you were the applicant, so...
Yep.
At this point, and again, this is just for the future land use map amendment. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this, you're welcome to step forward. We'll recognize you for three minutes. Looks like everyone got it out of their system earlier. Okay, seeing nobody moving... Oh. Leave him wait, let you speak twice.
I can. That was Sue Cameron, 5258 Morning Sun Road. I'm just thinking of, the dog park is there, green space is there, I'm thinking about the zoning, because it's a landlocked space, pretty much. It's residential on three sides, only a parking lot on that fourth side. So I'm just wondering about, the campus thing sounds pretty good, I hadn't really thought this through, but I am, just given that I'm adjacent to it, I think the business where you're not having people coming at night, like you with the hotel, is a little bit better for the residents that are on three sides of that, so at least they're just nine-to-fivers, possibly, as opposed to the hotel, which is another proposal, which is going to be a lot of nighttime traffic and lights and noise. So that's just my thought on zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments on the land use map? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to adjourn from public session. So moved. Mr. Smith with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And there was no opposition unless someone wants to vote twice, so we're out of public session. All right, so again, this is simply on the comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment. So any questions, comments, concerns? Again, this is not binding, this doesn't change the zoning. That was already incorporated, potentially, in the annexation. So it's really just, if this is the direction, we want the comprehensive plan to change.
Was there any, I'm thinking of relations with the township, did we just discuss this with them at all, since, I don't know if they're in favor of this or not in favor of this, we kind of said, hey, we're going to annex this in, and I don't know if anybody, if they objected or gave it a thought.
So I do know their zoning, a lot of their zoning and direction is handled at the county level, and I know that there was a lot of interaction. I mean, I personally had sent them a letter and had conversations on our behalf, but Mr. Perry can elaborate.
Sure, thank you. As far as Oxford Township goes, we haven't received anything official from Oxford Township. There has been a lot of interaction with Butler County Department of Development because of the zoning procedures that are required. This was, the hotel was originally submitted through the county process for development under the B3 county zoning. As far as the annexation goes, I think from Oxford Township's standpoint, from the city's perspective, kind of no news is good news. There's not any opposition that we're aware of.
Okay.
The township is required to pass a resolution at some point during the annexation process, and I think we're waiting for them to do that, to not oppose the annexation.
Okay. I just didn't know if they would raise any objections, because technically, we're changing land use that, you know, we don't own yet, because it's not in the city, but I'm just arguing a semantic point.
That's a good question, yeah. And we hope to someday have a full process with Oxford Township to establish what should the land uses be.
Yep.
How can we work together on what areas should be annexed, what areas shouldn't, and those types of things.
Yep.
But we haven't done that yet.
I know.
So I think it's still going to be a piecemeal process. They don't have a planning staff. The county planning staff has had some turnover as well, so hopefully, after the dust settles, we can get into that process with the township.
All right. That's good. All right. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve/decline table awkwardly sit here. I like that new option.
I will, too.
All right, Vice Chair Rosenberg with the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smith with the second. All right, Mr. Perry, will you call the rules, sir?
Sure. Michael Smith?
Yes.
Ann Webster?
Yes.
Sean Rosenberg?
Yes.
Matt Arbuckle?
Yes.
Jason Bracken?
Yes.
For what?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes, so as far as the comprehensive plan's future land use map, it has been amended. That is a mouthful, by the way. So we are on to PC 2023-07, 525 North Campus Avenue, conditional use for a new Fairfield Inn by Marriott Hotel. Oxford Hotel Group LLC is the applicant and agent. And as Mr. Moore goes to the podium, I'll accept the motion to adjourn to public hearing. So moved. Mr. Smith with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we are in public hearing. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right. Hello again, Planning Commission. So this is PC 2023-07, this is 525 North Campus, proposal for a new hotel. And the applicant for this request is Oxford Hotel Group LLC. The current property owner, there's actually three that are involved, but the largest parcel is owned by the Ohio Association of Regular Baptist Churches, and that's the parcel where the hotel is proposed to be situated. The current use of that parcel was a former church, Faith Baptist Church, which is now vacant. The jurisdiction, as was discussed in the previous case, it's Oxford Township. Anexation petition has been filed to bring it into the city corporate limits. Current zoning that applies to the site is, it's under the Butler County Rural Zoning Resolution jurisdiction, and that was zoned B3 general business back in March of this year. It was previously an R3 one-and-two-family residential zone, so the county commissioners did rezone that to B3 back in March. And the proposal, it's a Fairfield-by-Marriott branded hotel. So here is a look at the site location, and the proposed site boundary is actually an interesting aspect to first consider, even before looking at the site plan details. So essentially, the proposal is, we're taking three different parcels and combining them into what would become a single development site. So these three parcels are currently separate and distinct from one another, and they're identified as one, two, and three on this slide here, so the boundary being shown in yellow. Parcel number one has frontage along Morning Sun Road, and totals a fifth of an acre in size. Parcel number two has no frontage whatsoever on any public thoroughfare, so to that end is essentially landlocked, in a way. That is at .71 acres in total size. And then, of course, the largest parcel, the one that's owned by the Baptist Church, that is 5.76 acres in size. So if you combine all these parcels together, you're looking at an overall site area of 6.67 acres in total, and that's exclusive of the right-of-way that would be located along Morning Sun Road or North Campus Avenue. There is 50 feet of right-of-way, effectively a stub of right-of-way, along the southern boundary of parcel number three. And the other two parcels that are identified on this slide, they're not part of the site boundary, but they are effectively, well, affected by this development proposal, and so I thought it would be worthy to point those out. Parcel number four, which is .77 acres in size, that's 5176 Morning Sun Road. There are five residential units on that property presently, so it's a multifamily property. It is within the city limits, so the corporate boundary is pretty much corresponding to this line here, so the southern line of the site boundary, the yellow. And parcel number five is a single-family residential property. It's very, very small, .15 acres in size. So there's a single-family home there, there is a gravel drive that extends off of the state highway, 732 Morning Sun Road, and so that property is going to very much be affected by this proposal as well. Here's a look at the zoning classifications that currently apply to the site, so I went and extracted out the zoning from the official township zoning map. So the zoning districts that you see here, to the above, or to the north of this yellow corporate line here, those are the county zoning designations, so those are not city zones. So it's county B3, county R3, there is a PUD over here on Keystone Close, and B4 designation as well, so those are all county designations. And then below this yellow line, and then, of course, to the east as well, that's all within the city of Oxford. So these are city zoning classifications. You have the office industrial district, which was discussed previously, along Morning Sun Road. You've got the R3 MS, that's a three-family mile square residential district along North Campus Avenue, and Homestead Avenue, which is down here off the extent of the map. The MU, or university zone, is kind of a holding zone to establish that there's a campus there, Miami's campus, of course. So that's what... So that's what the main purpose of that zoning district is, is there to achieve. And then there's a, a single family zone, the R1A. There's a driveway, a private driveway that extends off of 732 that links up to several of these houses. And I believe it's a total of two parcels, if I'm not mistaken, that are actually within the corporate limits of the city. But then the rest of those properties along that private drive are in the township outside of the city's zoning jurisdiction. And then, of course, here is the slide that you have already seen in relationship to the future land use map amendment request. This comes from the 2023 Comprehensive Plan. Of course, the U as a board just voted to recommend changing the rural classification to campus. So that change in, in classification from the future land use map standpoint now seems to support the notion of this eventually being rezoned to a GB general business zone, which as has already been said, the utilities ordinance that City Council has passed specifies that that would be the zoning district that's anticipated, that would support the future hotel development that's envisioned, that would need the utility connections from North Campus Avenue. Here's a look at the existing land uses in the area. So the C identifies land uses that are community facilities. So that includes churches. So it's identifying as a church presently. Of course, as I mentioned, the church is currently vacant on the, the subject parcel. There is another church site that is off to the south and to the west. There's the North Side Bark Dog Park that's shown as a P for park designation. There is a two family property that's to the west. There's single family to the north. There's kind of a mix of two family and single family down to the south on North Campus. As I mentioned previously, 5176 Morning Sun, which is here, that is in multifamily use. And the university use is this darker red color. And that, of course, is part of the Miami University campus. That's the Mallett Hall parking lot. That's associated with the sports, sports arena that's there. And then the M is just denoting medical office or medical style uses. Here is an aerial view that's looking to the north. And as is the case often with these slides, if we need to refer back to them during our discussion or during comment, we certainly can do that. But yeah, just, this probably offers the widest vicinity view within the slide deck here. So this gives you a view. There's, there's Kelly Drive that's way to the north and to the west that extends off of Morning Sun Road. You can see the single family houses that are kind of interspersed along that private drive that leads off of Morning Sun Road to the north. This gives you kind of a wider view of that Mallett Hall parking lot. And I've heard in conversation that I, I believe there's going to be some kind of a geothermal project that is to take place on this parking area. But that's just been anecdotal from my point of view. So I don't really know too much about what would be taking place with that. And then, of course, to the south, this is the Homestead Avenue and North Campus Avenue residential neighborhood. And that, that subdivision is, is quite old. It was originally platted in 1909. So this is extending an area of town that it has not been extended since its inception back in the early 1900s. So here we are in 2023, considering effectively an extension to our city and into the peripheral area to the north of town. Staff did visit the site on July 14th. So the next series of slides, I'll show you some pictures that were taken during the site visit. So here are just some views of the Mallett Hall parking area from Miami's campus. Going to a close up of the site. Here's a picture of the church building that is kind of tucked in that northeastern corner of the site. And then this is a picture of the woods that are toward the western edge of the larger parcel. So this would be looking toward the west from kind of this cleared area, what was formerly a parking area for the church building. Here are some photos that are closer in vicinity to the North Campus Avenue right of way, Public Street stub. So this is a view looking south onto North Campus. And then this is essentially looking the other direction toward the church building. One thing that's been noted in past meetings is the fact that there's been some illegal dumping that has occurred on the site over time. And so this is a kind of a, a picture showing some of the debris that's present. In particular, this kind of corner, the southeastern corner of the site, has a lot of that debris that's kind of laying around. And of course, this development represents an opportunity to mitigate these already present negative conditions on the site. This is a photo. So there is a drainage way that's kind of running eastward from the adjacent property to the west. You actually notice on the aerial image, it almost kind of looks like a little pond or a lake. So I think what that is showing there is effectively blockage of the stormwater. So you can see kind of the soil is wet in parts. So when there's a heavy rain, this is probably backing up to a certain degree. Of course, you can see that there's some debris that's there. And hopefully that a result of the development, that any of these blockages would be cleared and there would be proper function and flow of the stormwater through the site. So hopefully these conditions could be, could be mitigated as a result of the development. One thing I will note topographically, there's a pretty steep ravine, a drop off as you move eastward from kind of this, this edge of the woods in this area. There is a drainage way that runs in this general vicinity here. So this photo probably doesn't do it justice. It really takes visiting the site to kind of get a, get a sense and perception for this drop off. But I think you'll see on the later slides that the contour lines are pretty close together in this area. So there is very much a ravine in this area. So some topography to deal with in that, in that area. So now we're moving toward the western portion of the site boundary. So this is a look at the single family home. It's at 5196 Morning Sun Road. Again, that's in the township jurisdiction. There is a, a gravel drive that serves that property. And the tenants of that property are currently parking on that drive. Unfortunately, a portion of that gravel drive does encroach onto the, the boundary that is being considered for the hotel. So the, as part of that proposal, part of this gravel drive will have to basically be wiped away or cleared away to make way for the new hotel entrance. There are ways that hopefully we can take some steps to ensure that maybe possibly down the road, there could be another point of access for this property. So this property won't be completely locked away or having an awkward access configuration for the tenants that would continue to reside in the future in, at this residential dwelling. But there, and then there's also this photo. This is the photo of the multifamily complex, if you will, that's to the south of the site boundary. This is 5176 Morning Sun. Believe there's a total of four units in the back building and then one unit in the building that's closest to the road. And then here is a look at Morning Sun Road. This is looking northward toward the township or into the township. And then this is a view looking south toward town. So you can see it's pretty much an unimproved rural roadway, state highway at this, at this moment in time. This is a photo taken from the North Side Bark Dog Park. This is where the public sidewalk network currently terminates. And you may have noticed in the staff report, one of the recommended conditions is to have a, a new public sidewalk along Morning Sun Road so that there's a continuous pedestrian linkage between the future hotel and the rest of the public sidewalk network that taps into Morning Sun Road. In addition to that, that's shown to North Campus Avenue. Okay. So getting into the site details, so this is an aerial view. These are kind of the drainage way, existing drainage ways. This is data that the city has access to. So not field verified by any means, but it does give you a pretty good impression for sort of the general flow of stormwater through the site. And again, everything is kind of flowing toward the east. So eventually most of the stormwater on this site that is carried from these adjoining sites eventually ends up on the Miami property, actually. There's also a stream to the north that you can see there. And so on this next slide, I'm showing you the affected parcels. So if you recall, one, two, three, four, and five, the number of parcels that I showed you before. The red boundary is a little bit closer approximation of where those property boundaries actually are. The white lines are coming from the county auditor and those are not survey accurate. So this is a better approximation of where the property lines are actually falling on the ground that we're dealing with. Then again, the site boundary. So this is the black line. So those are the three parcels that are being most directly affected and developed by the hotel. So this is the original site plan that staff received from the applicant. So just to kind of walk you through the, the site features. So the, the hotel building itself is shown in blue. This does show a total of 96 off-street parking spaces, which meets the minimum code requirement for a minimum of one space per room. There are 92 total rooms proposed for this hotel. So this site plan is showing, of course, four more spaces than what the minimum required would be. You'll see over here that the, there, there's an existing curb cut to 5176 Morning Sun Road. That curb cut is proposed to be essentially severed and, and, and closed. And a new access point would be created off of the hotel entry drive. So there would be a new curb cut for the entry drive into the hotel site from Morning Sun Road. This purple area here is the, sort of the remaining gravel portion for that driveway that I showed you a picture of for 5196 Morning Sun Road. The reason that the applicant is effectively able to show reconfigured access to 5176 to the south, the property owner for this property also happens to own parcel number two, which is the landlocked one in the center. And so they were, there's obviously been direct conversation with that owner. So there's been agreements in terms of providing access, continued access to that existing residential property. I believe also as part of the agreements with that owner, there's to be some fencing erected along the property boundary. So it's a six foot tall vinyl privacy fencing that's proposed along this boundary. That's part of that agreement. Kind of shifting over back to sort of the center here. So you can see the, the walkway that leads to North Campus Avenue right here. That is a code requirement to have pedestrian walkways to public sidewalks and thoroughfares that are adjacent to the site. So that requirement is effectively being met. There's also a walkway that's shown, and it kind of zigzags here and leads down to the Mallett Hall parking lot. So of course, there is a portion of that walkway that is being shown by this plan to be located on Miami property. So hopefully Miami would grant their approval and the applicant could work with the university to ensure that that does happen. And that there would be some pedestrian connectivity over to Mallett Hall. So for any folks that would be staying at the hotel, if they're there primarily to attend events that are happening on campus, that hopefully they would have a more direct route to access by foot directly from the hotel. The original site plan had included a sort of dead end or turnaround. I think the note here was for a fire department turnaround. Bless you. There's been some substantial revisions regarding the North Campus Avenue stub and possible connectivity to that stub. Staff has recommended full access be provided to North Campus Avenue. And that has really been inspired in, in great part by comments that we've received from our fire and police chiefs to provide more than one way in and out of the site for emergency access. And, and also just in, in general, for, for traffic in general, just to better disperse the traffic. So there's more than one way in and out of the site. And then lastly, I'll mention on this slide, there's kind of two main detention areas proposed. And, and these are being proposed consistent with the city's stormwater requirements. So the general rule of thumb for stormwater is that the post-development rate cannot exceed the pre-development rate. No matter what, when you have impervious surface, new surfaces that are being created, you're going to have more volume of, of stormwater runoff. But what can be controlled is the rate that that runoff is released from the site in question. And so what these detention ponds effectively are designed to do is to try to hold back that water in the event that there is a, a storm that, that rolls through. The stormwater would be kind of captured by those basins and held back and released at the pre-development rate. And no, no, no larger than that pre-development rate. Here is a look at the grading plan. So it's pretty technical. I, I probably won't dwell on the slide for, for too long. But just kind of to generally point out, so anywhere where you see kind of a solid line or series of lines, that is where grading activities are proposed to occur. So there would be some, some degree of, of clearance of trees that would need to happen and, and regrading, re-sculpting of the site to make way for the two detention basins, as well as some sculpting of the site around this general vicinity here, around the parking lot. And kind of the flatter portion of the site is, is where the hotel building and the parking areas are proposed to be situated. We have not received any tree survey details as of yet from the applicant, but we have received a tree clearance plan. So what this does is it effectively takes sort of a bubbled look at where the existing tree canopy is. And then sort of dividing it between green and red. So red would be areas where there's tree cover that would have to be cleared away to make way for the development. And anywhere that's green would hopefully be remaining more or less untouched. Of course, if there is any sort of honeysuckle or dead trees or anything of that nature, the tree ordinance allows for that to be cleared away. But generally speaking, anywhere that's red is, is going to have to be cleared to make way for development features that are planned. This is the original landscaping plan that we received. So it's following the, the site plan that I've already acquainted you with. There are, I think, a total of total of 22 deciduous trees and 30 evergreens. The evergreens are sort of clustered to the, to the north here, sort of along this buffered area. So I think the, the intent with that was to try to replace tree cover that would be cleared away in those areas. The 22 deciduous trees are shown sort of interspersed within the parking lot area. And one of the staff recommendations that appears in the conditions has to do with screening headlight glare from adjoining residential property. And I think one of the effective ways to do that is to have some additional planting along the westernmost edge of the parking, as well as the southernmost edge. And we very, very recently received some revisions. So this is hot off the press, so to speak. Yes. Today, we received a plan that has some, some plantings that are shown. So the applicant is in agreement that some additional planting should occur in, in these general areas. This landscaping plan, however, it, it doesn't yet reflect the latest layout when it comes to access and parking and so forth. So just keep that in mind that this slide is, is really here for the sake of demonstrating a little bit more detailed view of what these shrubbery rows, what the impression of those would be once the landscaping plan has been revised. I'll just quickly highlight here, this is a photometric grid. This is one of the requirements that we, we typically ask for at the building permit stage. We're getting it a little bit early when it comes to this conditional use quest, request. request. There is a minimum lighting requirement, security lighting for off-street parking areas, to have a minimum of one-foot candle spread across the parking area, but to also not have that same reading of one-foot candle spilling over onto adjoining residential properties. So what this photometric plan shows, and I know it's hard to read at this scale, but what this effectively shows is, hopefully, once these new lights are installed, so Ballard-style lights along the pedestrian walkway to North Campus, as well as taller parking lot light poles in the parking areas, that there wouldn't be any negative spillover occurring to adjoining residential properties. The next series of slides is going to zoom in pretty close to the proposed Morning Sun Road access point. So this is 5176 Morning Sun, this is 5196. So here is, this is just showing you the existing conditions in relationship to the property boundaries. One thing I will note before I continue, so there's actually a portion of the parking area that exists for 5176 that is on parcel number two, just part of the site boundary. So that would, that would remain in place on this property with fencing going around it. There is a shed that's located just to the north of that parking lot that would need to be relocated somewhere else on the property, whatever the property owner's wishes were to have that shed relocated to make way for the future driveway. But this gives you a better view for where that new proposed access point would be. So again, this asphalt and this cut, this connection is to be eliminated, and the gravel drive, which you can actually see some vehicles pictured in the aerial imagery, those are effectively encroaching onto the property that is being considered for development. So that would no longer be a viable parking area for this dwelling. So what we are suggesting as staff, and I think there's general agreement from the applicant on this, is to have an access easement overlaid on this driveway that would grant in perpetuity access rights to the adjoining residential properties, both properties. We have heard from the applicant, unfortunately, it has been difficult to contact and get this property owner onboard with the possibility of having some kind of driveway connectivity from here. I don't think it's out of the question, and I think having this easement in place would allow for that future possibility, that hopefully, once that property owner could be contacted, or some kind of agreement could be worked out, that having this easement in place will allow for some kind of future drive and parking area that can service this dwelling, and hopefully eliminate this problematic spacing between the proposed driveway and the existing gravel curb cut that serves 5196. The next slide shows you a better view of where the public sidewalk connection should occur. This is a code requirement, so any property that is being developed is required to have a public sidewalk built when none exists. Because this site, even though it may not be necessarily proposed by the applicant as the site boundary, it's very much a part of the development, it's being affected by the development, so we feel that with respect to the code requirement, that the sidewalk should go in along this property within the right-of-way and then connect up to the sidewalk that currently terminates at the North Side Bark Dog Park. Lastly, when it comes to these Morning Sun Road access slides, so there is a freestanding sign that was shown actually to be encroaching into the right-of-way, and that would not be permitted by code, so we want to make sure that that freestanding sign that would be identifying the Fairfield Hotel entrance, that that would be relocated out of the right-of-way. And just to reiterate here, the code requirement, the minimum setback is equal to the height of the sign. So in the general business district, the maximum sign height is six feet, so if you're maximizing your sign height per code, that essentially means that the minimum setback would be six feet from the right-of-way line. Okay, so going back to the original site plan, and I've really kind of teed this up so that when I click to the next slide, you'll be able to see some of the changes that have occurred following the staff review and the release of comments. I think the applicant's been very, very diligent to try to revise the site plan according to staff comments. So this is an updated site plan that we received on July 29th. So I'll just walk you through some of the changes that have occurred in between these two versions. Probably the most obvious change that you will see, this red hatching, which is identified as kind of a conceptual way, at least, I guess I'll put it, to connect the parking lot driveway to North Campus Avenue here. What was originally proposed was a one-way connection. The present recommendation is to have a two-way connection. More than likely, even if you sign it as a one-way, folks might get confused, or they may violate the sign. It's just, it would be better to just have it be two ways, in and out. I think that embraces the spirit of the comments that we received from our fire and police chiefs much better anyways. So since North Campus Avenue is already a two-way, it just makes sense to continue that connection as is, connect it up with the hotel parking lot. The red area that's shown here that goes to the north of the building and to the east, that is being showed, shown in an attempt to try to fulfill what has been a substantial comment from our fire chief, which is to have wraparound access around the building so that in the event of an emergency, like a fire, that will better equip his department to be able to handle the emergency, to do the fire attack that would need, that would be happening in that, in an unfortunate event if it were to occur. But what this, this site plan conveys here is effectively not, it's not been engineered, and it's not been, it has been seen by staff, and at least embraced in concept. And when I say staff, I mean all the departments that normally review the plans. But what we would be looking for was a little bit more of a, an engineered feel, an incorporation into the overall site layout, and run that through the staff review process, have the departments look at that. Before I move to the next site plan, the next version, I'll just mention one of the conditions that's recommended has to do with curbing alongside the private accessways for the, for the parking lot. This is a code requirement to have six-inch-high curbing, and we are amenable to reducing the curbing in this stretch here, since this is kind of more like a parkway. There's not intended to be any sort of buildings or uses along this stretch. There's probably less, it's less susceptible to vehicles driving over the pavement, creating ruts in the dirt. So we would be amenable to relieving the applicant from the requirement for curbing in this area, but otherwise, we would just like to stick to the usual standard to have curbing all the way around the parking lot. Occasional openings are allowed for stormwater management, so if there needed to be openings along the curbing adjacent to this stormwater area, for instance, that would be permissible. Okay, so here is the latest site plan that we've received today. So I think what this shows effectively, so it's, I think the applicant is embracing the idea that there would be a two-way connection to North Campus Avenue, so this is effectively now shown as asphalt. I do think that this driveway in this location warrants further review. It does seem to be a little bit shoehorned in when it comes to the existing site plan that we have been dealing with from the beginning. When it comes to the most recent hotel proposal, the Holiday Inn on College Corner Pike, when we delivered the comment that there'd be wraparound access, it really substantially affected the layout. It was, it was a very substantial change. So it seems a little odd to just kind of insert this driveway in this manner and have such sharp 90-degree turns. One thing that we typically ask for when we're looking at something that's a little bit strange in terms of turning radii and access is a fire truck turning template that could be prepared to ensure that a fire apparatus, a fire engine can effectively navigate those turns. So if this was the proposal that the commission was amenable to, if you felt that this was on target and you wanted staff to continue exploring this as a possibility, then our next ask at that point would be for a turning template for the City of Oxford Fire Truck. These are the building elevations. I think the main thing I would mention here, the general business zone normally requires 60% natural materials to be utilized, like stone or brick, for instance. Staff had calculated the percentage shown here to be about 19%. There is some stone that's proposed for, around the canopy area, so this part of the canopy here, I think there's an accent, accent wall that's to the left of the front entrance. That can certainly count toward the natural materials. There's kind of this composite material that resembles wood. That is being counted into the 19%. But a lot of the surface is ephes, which is not falling into the natural material bucket. So in order to approve the building design as is, which clearly is following a branding palette for the Fairfield by Marriott Hotel brand, this is going to require a waiver in order to acknowledge the present building elevations. Okay, so we've arrived at the recommendation. Staff recommends tabling the application at this time. And really, the two key concerns at this moment, the full access from North Campus Avenue, I think when the staff report was written, we, of course, hadn't received the latest site plan version, which I think is pretty well demonstrating that that access point can be achieved with minimal disturbance to the rest of this overall site layout. So really, point number two is probably the most significant at this moment in time, which is asking for complete wraparound access around the building perimeter. So I guess a major question that the commission would be tasked with tonight is considering whether this current site plan and overall design is on target, or deserves some rethinking in light of the decision criteria and the analysis that's been provided. If the commission is inclined to recommend approval of the site plan as it stands tonight, these would be the recommended conditions that staff would offer that you could attach to your approval. I won't read them out verbatim, but this slide lists all 14 recommended conditions, and this is just a general summary of each of those, so I will try to very briefly touch on each of these, and then I promise that will be the conclusion of my presentation. So number one would be ensuring the two-way connection to North Campus. Point number two, traffic impact study. So this was inspired in large part by conversations with the city engineer following his first round of comments. We received some correspondence today that ODOT actually does not require a traffic impact study for this size of development. What they would require is a turn lane warrant analysis, so the orange text is effectively a very recent suggestion and addition to that condition. But you will notice the language as written is to the discretion of the city engineer, because this would really be a topic for him to pay attention to. Condition number three is increasing the perimeter setback. I think that was something I failed to mention. With the latest design iteration, there has been an attempt to meet that setback, so I think that hopefully can effectively be fulfilled. Number four is the shrubbery, which as I showed with the latest iteration of the landscape plan, I think that can be embraced. Number five is parcel consolidation. So that would be consolidating parcels one, two, and three to form a single development site, so dissolving the boundaries in between. And that would be required to go through the lot split and consolidation process prior to recording with the county. We would like that recording to happen before the building permit receives zoning sign-off. Condition number six is the access easement that I had shown you previously for the residential parcels on Morning Sun Road. Number seven is for the sidewalk along Morning Sun. Number eight is for the curbing to be installed per the previous slide. Number nine and 10 were pretty much inspired or taken almost directly from the fire chief's comments in terms of having the necessary fire hydrants and other requests that the chief has had. Condition number 11 is having the stormwater installed per city specs. And then the last three conditions would be to acknowledge various code waivers that would be needed to approve as it is. So those being for building design, waiving the tree survey requirement, and waiving, allowing for a total of three signs, something I haven't mentioned. So the proposal right now is to have a wall sign on the western side and one on the eastern side. The way that they're shown in the plans is at 70 square feet, so we would propose that they be capped at 70 square feet. The usual limit is to have no more than one wall sign and ground sign, so a total of two. So what this would do would be to allow for a total of three as opposed to the usual code maximum of two. I know that was a lot of details, so certainly, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question.
This is a quick one. So, excuse me, why do you want to waive the tree survey?
So, condition number 13 is really there, only if the condition, if the commission is inclined to recommend approval. What you're essentially saying, if you were to recommend approval tonight, is that we don't need to see a tree survey. We feel that the level of detail that the applicant has provided up to this point has been sufficient. I think the most that you have to go by at this time is that tree clearance exhibit that I showed that has kind of the red versus the green. Having a tree survey might help the commission to kind of better understand where the most mature trees are located on the site. One of the major concerns with this, and one of the key code requirements, is having adequate screening of this development from the adjoining residential. And it's very difficult to try to discern with the details that we have presently, or even if we had a tree survey for that matter, whether there's going to be sufficient screening that will be in place from the existing vegetation. So if you were to ask for a tree survey to be done, you could certainly do that. It's certainly within your rights, within code, to do that. In the past, I guess I'll mention the most recent hotel proposal for Holiday Inn. When it came to that proposal, it was very clear that there was, there was one pocket of woods that was kind of tucked off to one side of the site, and that pocket was not going to be disturbed for the most part, that the hotel would be situated on an area that was devoid of trees. And so it was a little bit more obvious with that plan that a tree survey would just be an unnecessary expense that didn't need to be incurred for that particular project. So to that end, effectively, you're able to consider the site layout as proposed, and whether it appears to be sensitively designed with respect to the existing vegetation, and if you feel like the development is possibly being constrained more so as a result of that, and sensitively designed, then what you could do at that moment is to relieve the developer from the tree survey requirement if you feel like it's embracing sort of the spirit and the principles that are in the tree ordinance.
Mr. Smith?
I don't have any immediate questions for staff.
So I have a question. With the signs, we normally, like you said, one ground, one wall. Seeing as the majority of this is going to be tucked in the woods, I'm curious why staff didn't recommend two entranceway monuments and one building one, because it seems like one of them is aimed at Mallett Hall, which is super and great for advertising. But for those of you who sit at the light facing Walgreens, the arb's that cover the words Walgreens are super effective in blocking it out. So I'm thinking of, Ms. Blackmore would love me for this, light pollution, and just having a sign for the fun of it, which is going to face trees, and if you've ever been in Mallett's lot at night, you can pull whatever And if you've ever been in Mallett's lot at night, you can pull whatever you want behind those trees. Those lights are going to forbid you seeing anything. So why the recommendation for a waiver on the two building signs?
Well, again, the recommendation is there, so the recommendation at this point is to table the request for the main reasons being to redesign the site. So this is different in a sense from a recommendation for approval. So from my standpoint, the condition, the way it's worded, it's there to support the request as received. I think the conversation surrounding signage and where it's appropriate, whether it deserves a waiver to have three signs as opposed to two, that is all worthy of discussion.
Okay.
Worthy of questioning the applicant about that to see what would make the most sense.
So it's fair to say it was just a starting point.
Yes, correct.
Because I was trying to, I couldn't find anything in there, so I was a little lost. So, okay, sorry about that.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore? All right. At this point, we can hand it over to, I believe, Mr. Alexander and Mr. Page.
Thank you, Commissioner and members of the commission. My name is Paul Page, address 333 East Ohio Street. It's located in Indianapolis, Indiana, 46204. I'm also here with one of our partners, Steve Alexander, who's an architect. Unfortunately, our other partner, Neil Alexander, came down with an eye issue, and he'll probably have to have an emergency eye treatment tomorrow morning of some sort. So he couldn't be here. He's one of the smarter of the three of us. So hopefully, if you have questions for, he's the contractor, so hopefully he's got those questions. Hopefully, Mr. Alexander can answer those questions. Appreciate Mr. Moore and Mr. Perry, the work that we've done with them for the last couple of months. It's been extensive. We've been through a lot of planning and provided them with much information. They provided us with their expertise along with, you know, their staff and all that. So I think we are, I would say, 99% where we need to be. We are in agreement with really everything that Mr. Moore has provided to you. The only couple of issues that were, I believe, in the staff report and what Mr. Moore stated was the issue of the fire trail, the access to Campus Avenue, and now that the sign issue. But I think we would rather, rather than table this, we agree that, you know, whatever needs to happen with that fire trail, whatever needs to happen there, that's something that we're going to agree to, we're going to have to do. So it's going to be contingent upon the staff's acceptance of that. And then with the signs going from three to two, I think Marriott would be fine with, it doesn't really, I mean, and I agree with you, Mr. Watt, if on one side you can't see it anyway, why would Marriott want that? Wouldn't it be better to have that sign on the road? So really, it doesn't really matter where it is, as long as we could have three versus two. I think tabling it to see, you know, whether or not we have it on the road versus the side. I mean, whatever makes businesses or whatever staff and city council or the planning commission believes what's in its best interest, we're in agreeable with that. So with that, you know, our recommendation or our request would be, you know, rather than table this, the important part about this and the reason we've been working as diligently we have with staff is that we are in a tight timeframe. In order for this to be successful, we need to open up by August of 2024. That's when the school, you know, opens. That's because, you know, we all know in this industry, you've got to fill up the rooms, and it's very difficult to fill up rooms, you know, especially on a, you know, on a campus in the summertime. Therefore, to be successful, in order for the bank, you know, to, you know, loan money, they're going to make sure it's successful. So it's really important for us, the timeframe is open up by August of 2024. And so, you know, with the, even as good as Mr. Alexander is and Mr. Burnett is, it's going to take a year to get this completed. So that's why, rather than tabling it, if we can get it passed, move on to the council next week and start moving forward and perhaps, you know, get this project underway, that would be much appreciated. And having said that, if you have any questions, probably Mr. Alexander's going to be the guy that's going to answer them because he's the smartest one of the two. So, but if you have any questions, please let us know.
Well, my biggest question is how are you with, you know, changing the outside of the building? Because, put it this way, Oxford's fussy. We don't like ephesus. We'd rather see brick. I'm surprised we don't have anybody here from Miami University. They would like to see brick being that adjacent to their campus. I think we need to work, I think we need to get the natural material level on the outside of the building up to what our code is to start with. I mean, I really think we should table this tonight because there's a lot, a lot in play that staff needs to evaluate. I mean, I'm all for the connection with Campus Avenue, but that brings us in a whole new problem, you know, with the possibility of funneling 96 cars up that street. So I don't know, you know, that's something council's going to have to debate, too. I mean, I think it needs to be connected, but do we have a gate there? You know, this is as much a question for the chief as anything as to how we integrate that. I think, you know, there's also issues with getting fire apparatus around the building. I mean, he makes a very good point with that. I've seen it done. I've seen it done well. I think that, I think we're close to a solution on that. There are ways to do it, but I just think there are too many, too many things in play for me to want to approve this tonight. And I want to approve it because I want this project, you know, I really do. But again, we're fussy, so we tend to want to have it the way we want it. You know, we want to see it before we approve it.
Are there any other questions? I do have a question, and it might be more for the architect. Could you go back to these, one of the site plans that shows the building location? And this is not uncommon for conditional use. We just went through one for a hotel. I looked at the elevations. Is there a way to reorient this on the property? I know that tends to be the clearing for the church, but even though they're connected by sidewalks, there's a lot of discombobulation, and I agree with the fire access and turning trucks. But I just see some different options that would maybe reduce the impact on the adjoining residencies. So the lower, gosh, what is it, lower right-hand corner, that's a 1,800 space lot. I mean, you can jam whatever you want down there, and nobody's going to be directly impacted. So are there options for reorienting this on the property? Because that's really close to the northern properties and the basins on the outside. And then, again, like I said, I see the sidewalk connectivity, but if I was somebody schlepping a suitcase, I don't think I'd want to be in that lot by basin number two.
I see Mr. Alexander sneaking up behind me. Somehow I didn't answer the question.
My name's Steve Alexander with Prince Alexander Architects, 850 South Meridian in Indianapolis, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I explain a little bit? Is that a pointer? The, does that have the pointer in?
Is there a laser pointer?
Yes, there's a pointer. It's a red, light on.
Okay, that's right. Okay. Oh, thank you. There you go.
All right, thank you. So this part of the, several issues about site planning here. The drainage way that comes through here, there's a large pipe that comes in air in the utility plant. You can see it more clearly. Originally, this was a giant ravine that kind of went through here and actually went into the campus historically or prehistorically, if you will. And this is all unconsolidated fill under here. That's why you get the parking lot there. And then another thing we looked at early on in kind of in sort of larger scale planning was that when you zoom out, one of those larger photos, you see that the university has improvements that go all the way out to Morning Sun Road over here. And from a larger planning perspective, it looks kind of apparent that the campus designation of intended use, if you were free to plan the area, would be to rather designate that whole area and connect the campus planning concept out to Morning Sun Road. If the university was to grow or university support retail, like hotels and conference centers and things, were to be developed in this area, that would be, the frontage would be on Morning Sun Road. And so in looking at that, again, it might not be next year, might not be two years, but if we're successful in other businesses and the university understands appointing that in a conference center, that this might be a likely place to expand that, those kinds of uses. That makes this the front, the front of the building towards Morning Sun Road. And so in sort of looking at the larger planning, what other development may happen here, it might be our development team doing, it might be another developer that would submit and participate here. But to turn, we actually looked at a variety of scenarios, one of which had the front of the building pointing towards Campus Avenue, kind of what you were referring to. And we felt like that was a, like we're the big, the big plan, kind of obvious growth in the future in this area would be. I don't know if that answers your question. There's a number of ways to do it, and this is the one we ended up with for a number of other reasons is that we felt that the parking lot here, for better or worse, is rather a large public plaza, predame, pre-event, lots of people in the parking lot, lots of stuff going in the parking lot, the business painted.
You've clearly never been to a Miami football game.
A town square of sorts, and that front, this, when you look at the elevations, the front and the back look quite a bit alike. And that was another reason to have rather that long elevation facing that public square, if you will, and the narrower elevations facing the other areas. That was kind of our rationale in the office and kind of looking at the planning aspects.
No, I appreciate that feedback. I mean, I can't predict the future. I don't work at the university anymore, but I don't envision a lot of growth out that way. And to Mr. Smith's point, that would even reinforce the facade more for how it faced. So, okay. Any other questions for the applicants?
All right, thank you very much.
I do want to answer Mr. Smith.
Sure.
If he had a question about the facade.
Yeah.
And the reason the facade is what it is is Marriott, it's their requirement. So it's not something that we put forth. Any hotel franchise, whether it be Hilton, whether it be Marriott, they're going to give you the set of plans that they want you to go by, which includes the aesthetics of the building itself. And that's really why, I mean, why we.
Yeah, but we've worked with hotels before, and if they were building in our historic district, they would conform to our historic norms.
I just want to let you know that's why.
I understand that, I understand that. But they will be flexible if you go back to them and tell them we want something else.
Okay. All right.
If I may, just one last point about relationships with the university. We do have a letter from Dr. Kramer?
Dr. Kramer.
Dr. Kramer, supporting the sidewalk connection to the parking lot from our property. So we have been in communication with the university and shared the plan with them.
Fantastic. All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right, at this time, are there any members of the public or city staff that would like to come forth and share their thoughts for up to three minutes? I told you I'd acknowledge you a second time. It's a different business item.
Yes. Okay, Sue Cameron, 5258 Morning Sun Road. One thing this did not show is the elevation of Morning Sun Road, the next property. It isn't flat. It's down a huge elevation, a steep ravine, so that our house is lower than the ground level of where this hotel is at, right at the top of our hill. So we are concerned about light pollution, noise pollution, water runoff, and just screening. So what kind of things, the city had said that most of the water will be taken care of by the storm drains, but not all of it. We have a creek right at the bottom of that ravine, which you saw in, you can see it, I don't know if you can see it there. It just barely touches the top of that. So where's the water going to go from this 96 parking spaces, that 18,000 square foot building at right at the top of the hill? The idea of moving it to the south, North Campus Road makes much more sense since that's transient rental property, not residential permanent property. On our end of the road, we are squeezed already by 7:32, and then with this behind us, the private backyard will no longer be private and quiet. It'll be noisy. We have a, right at the top of our hill, there's a trash, the trash is there, so we're going to be listening to the trash truck come whenever it comes and dump out the trash. We have the heating and air conditioning units and screening. There's nothing about that side of the, I didn't see anything about landscaping on the north side. It's all about the other sides. Well, when they cut down all the trees, which they're not going to cut on the north side, what are they going to do? So we were told that they would do a evergreen eight-foot berm. I didn't see anything drawn up about that. That would have to be done initially at the outset of that drawing. And also the water runoff, I'm not sure. We already have all of Kramer's, since they redid their school, we had all their runoff. We're the drainage ditch for them now. So this is going to add a possible more additional water load. And then the light thing, if you have light, even if they have alumens working in a certain way, we are below the elevation in our house so that we are going to now see all the lights from the parking lot, the headlights, and so forth, even if they do put a berm because it's three stories high, and we are down below. So that's, the noise is the same issue. We will hear everything, every sound. And also right now, that is a very, speaking of green space, we have, we have every type of animal, including owls, that reside in that nature, that seven acres, which will all be left behind. So I really think if they're going to build it here, it needs to be reconfigured closer to the south side. Parking might be one thing, but the building next to the northern border of that piece is not amenable to what we would prefer. And I don't see us selling off our land to Miami anytime soon. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Still sitting here. Again, Craig Erickson, 5280 Morning Sun Road. And I've gone over the staff reports, I think most of the staff reports that I've publicly has been able to see. And thus far, I mean, the staff has done a very good job at looking at the factual matters of what has to be addressed and so on. There are a couple of other things that I think need to be considered is that for a building this size with 92 guest rooms, they're going to have very substantial air conditioning requirements and heat requirements. And as time goes on, they're going to have more substantial air conditioning requirements. What that gets down to is where the air conditioning units will be placed for the building, mainly to isolate the sound of either the air conditioning units or the heating units. Those things will be running potentially 365 days of the year. So how that will affect the neighbors and the neighboring community, even as you go up south into the city, you're going to have this whiny noise potentially going on every day and night of the year. So I would like to have the committee take a closer look at that and see how that can be managed. I think that's a significant factor we should look at and consider. It's kind of an intangible thing in one way, but on the other way... It's kind of an intangible thing in one way, but on the other way, it's a very significant one. There are some serious questions about the blue lines that you see there. Some of them are accurate and some of them are not quite accurate, and I could discuss that with staff at some future point in time instead of tonight. The northeast, or, yeah, northeast corner is designated as an environmentally sensitive area, and it's that particular geology of that particular point that is designated that way. And so, that's why that whole part there will have to be really carefully examined on what type of stress could be placed on the land there. I agree that if the commission could have a topographical map of what is happening to the north and what's going to this area, especially to the east, some of that is about a 75-deep, foot-deep culvert right now, and much of it is landfill of one sort or the other. It doesn't show up on any of these diagrams or layouts here. To the north, that property to the north, the line, property line sits there, but then there's a slope that goes down about 75 feet to the property level, down at the creek level down there. The Camerons have a house. So, that results potentially in a three-story building sitting very close to the edge of the Camerons' property and looking down another 70 feet into their house. So, it's just kind of like, figuratively speaking, you have a house in Manhattan, somebody wants to put up a 30-story house, right? So, what are you gonna do? You've gotta move it away one way or the other, or is it necessary? But I think it's a hardship for the Camerons for that particular sighting. If it could be moved forward, that would be wonderful, I think, for them. So, those are the two issues right now, probably to give more attention to. And then, finally...
We've arrived at your three minutes.
Out of time, okay.
Yeah.
But anyway, the next meeting, I'll just summarize. The process started in Hamilton in January, but the recommendations have been, all the way up the line, is that there would be a berm around the property lots, there would be all, parking lighting would be inward, and that the trees that were existing there would remain. Time's up.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself and give your address.
Gina Corso, 5381 Corso Road.
What was your first name?
Gina.
Thank you.
I think they did a great job. The presentation was great, and they hit on everything. I was wondering about where the access to Morning Sun is, if they're gonna have a stop sign, or if they're gonna have a light, or what they're gonna do, because I've had a lot of issues on driving to and from my home where people don't follow the speed limit. I mean, seriously, you're supposed to be going 35 to 45, and I'm almost at my road, and I'm having giant trucks that are full of gravel almost running me over. I've gone into Mr. Erickson's driveway over and over, trying to avoid being hit by a giant truck. So, there's gotta be something established where they need to have a better speed limit, and it needs to go past Jaeger, because that's where a lot of people are coming and going, in and out, in and out, in and out, all the time. Kids, bikes, people, everything. And then, the other thing was the water runoff. I work at a place where they have water retention areas. I'm sure they have that all planned in there, but I don't see retention area ponds, and I thought with what we experience, is we experience within 20 minutes of rains, we'll have like six feet of water in those retention things, sometimes overflowing. So, I mean, just to be aware that they might want to check in to look into some kind of a system that's not gonna, you know, because you're gonna have a lot of water running quickly, so, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is James Curtis Taylor. I live at 5270 Morning Sun Road. Mildly two comments are related to traffic, both vehicle and pedestrian. From a vehicle standpoint, I think it was stated 90-some units. The increased traffic as it comes out on the Morning Sun Road and heading north, as the individual before me stated, there's a blind spot as you come out of town, right before you get to the private drive that was mentioned earlier. And if you don't, if you don't time it perfectly on a normal day without this additional traffic, I've been stopped no more, no less than at least five times since I've lived there in 2014 to today, having to stop mid-turn and back back up into my driveway because of cars speeding around that corner. I think you're gonna find very quickly that the traffic level is gonna be such that there's gonna have to be not only a study, but some additional lighting you put in, stop signs, enforcement in that area. The last thing I would make a comment on is that as you go down Morning Sun Road to the north, you get to the section, I don't know the street name, but it's where it ties into mile marker one of the campus sidewalk that goes all the way around the city now. And it's great for us, we walk down the other driveway and look both ways and run like hell to get across to make sure we don't get hit. But it is a great thing, you know, to be able to go down to the Black Street Bridge and all that. But I think people, that will be a draw for people who want to walk down that road somehow and get to that mile marker one to be able to start their journey, their own bicycles or just walking. It's a great walk. So, just to make a comment on that, to make sure that that gets captured, that somebody takes a look at it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other folks from the public who would like to make a comment? All right. Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn from public session.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing no opposition? It's 10:37. We're about a half hour shy of our record.
Maybe you're right.
You were there, too. All right. Initial comments, thoughts? Again, I will try and behave and go last.
I would be inclined to table for all the reasons staff, like I mentioned earlier, and also I have concerns over a dismembered tree survey, the waving of it. I'd rather keep that, especially with concerns about shielding around the edges, taking into account the trees lost, making sure that it would get there, provide services that's still in place.
Mr. Erbickel?
Yeah. I favor tabling it. It's all been said and made.
I'm in favor of tabling. In the spirit of Billson Aveley, I would like to give some straw poll instructions and guidance to our colleagues on staff so that as they, if it does get tabled, that there's some direction that they can harness and hone, if that's fair. I, I'm fine with just a bullet point list and, you know, straw poll wins.
I agree with staff recommendations, except for the waving of the tree survey.
Okay. You guys want to build upon that?
I agree with Jason.
Me, too.
I agree, but I would really, really like the orientation revisited.
Yeah.
I, I, I have a creek in my backyard. I understand, but I think there's a little bit of play also, even simple things like the addition of the north campus that curves up into the northwest. And then, again, I'm making assumptions, and we all know those. I feel like it only curves because the parking lot's there, whereas there could be more prominence and flow. I could see where even that would cause confusion for somebody. They come in from Morning Sun and they're driving and, you know, they make the wrong turn, or, you know, I mean, there's, it just could, I feel like it could be cleaner, more condensed. And really, I'm just harnessing like the conversation we had for the Holiday Inn Express up on Collins Corner Bike. But my deal breaker, if you will, is I've driven, I mean, just recreationally, I have a full-size truck and a travel trailer. I couldn't get that around that corner, and it bends in the middle. So, I'm scared about a fire truck. So, I really would like that addressed.
Yeah, and to be explicit, for my recommendation for tabling, it's because of the two points, which includes the wraparound.
Yeah.
I presume they picked this orientation for very good reasons, but also it's not seen a wonky of these to be addressed, I think.
And if I could speak on Mr. Smith's behalf, just knowing the facade, having worked at Miami and knowing that there's a specific brick for Miami and branding standards that were beaten into me quite well, I would really encourage you to revisit that because approval for a sidewalk is one thing, but a prominent, basically de facto, university building, I can bear guarantee the 200, don't feel like counting it, years of the same brick is gonna be a pretty big thing for the university in this town. Mr. Barrett?
Could I make a comment about the Fire Access Room?
Yes.
Had a brief chat with the fire chief before we had to leave. He's supportive of the concept, but just asked that if, if and when this does go through, that there be some kind of a condition that it have fire chief approval for the reasons that Mr. Moore pointed out with the turning radio. So, I don't think he's concerned about it not working. He just wants to kind of trust and verify so that his equipment can get around there and not to get into the details of that tonight, but just, he just wanted to pass that along before he had to leave.
Perfect.
They are under, so there's requirements for us that we could decide to waive about material use, but they're under no obligation, right, to follow Miami's aesthetics?
No.
Just making that clear.
No. Oh, sorry. I, go ahead.
So, I think this was really helpful to hear some of the issues from the community, and I think one of the things that came out in discussion of the site plan is the need for some site sections so that we can understand the grades and the relationships to different adjacent properties. So, I just think that's a good reason to table this, so we can learn more about the site, get the tree survey, and understand the topography, basically, and if it works.
Just a footnote on aesthetic, we have no obligation to Miami, but I know that's quite a variation or a waiver for our standards, so it's just kind of the friendly neighbor copacetic. I mean, I don't think that all the entities in this corner of the county work that hard for symmetry on brick, even with the brand-new buildings, just to have an anomaly. That's what I'm saying.
I would say one more thing. It would be quite...
No, I thought you were gonna make a motion, so I was ready to say second.
Just wanted to say that I'd imagine that we're all in favor of getting this through as fast as you would like.
Yes.
However, these are the processes we typically follow, and we shouldn't make exceptions.
Well, and to that footnote, I think there were, there were different processes that were pursued that caused a delay that are far beyond the purview of this commission. So, if this had been on our agenda in February, we'd probably be having different conversations in March, so I think we have to work within our constraints, so I do apologize for any confusion there. All right. I'll entertain a motion to do something. I'm looking for the...
Do you want me to take it? I need a motion to table is all we need, right? Because we've made clear the recommendations going forward.
Yeah, a motion to table doesn't need criteria or conditions.
Yeah.
All right. So, I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh, we're gonna give Ms. Webster the second. All right. All those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion is tabled. Or actually, the, yeah, the business item is tabled. The motion was to table. I'm tired.
Excuse me, could I ask, just to understand what you're saying about the site plan, so we can skip that?
So, we can talk, I'm happy to talk with staff after, because we've technically...
Got it. I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying about term bill.
Yeah. All right. So, I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. We are adjourned.